Good evening. Why don't we go ahead and get started if we can? Welcome to the Monday, February 2nd, 2015 City Council Work Session. We're delighted you're all here with us tonight. We do have a pretty busy agenda, so why don't we go ahead and get started. Mr. Shields, would you like to introduce the first item?
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. The first item is a briefing from the Virginia Department of Transportation on the I-66 multimodal improvements inside the Beltway. And there's two phases to this. There's the inside the Beltway, and then there's also an outside the Beltway effort as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Paul Stotter to introduce our guests and set up the item. But many of these items have been on our plate for discussion in past meetings, and in fact, were part of our discussions with Arlington County just right before the holidays as well. And so a lot of these, the discussion of the multimodal aspects of this, I think, will be things that the council has supported in the past and would like to re-articulate with VDOT again today. Mr. Stotter?
Sure.
Thank you, Wyatt. So Mayor, members of council, there's a very brief staff report that staff prepared for this. I'll leave the context of the plan and what's in the plan to the VDOT presentation. Just to give you an update on what's happened so far, staff from Arlington County, Fairfax County, and City Falls Church have met with VDOT and DRPT staff twice. The atmosphere has been very collaborative. I'm very excited about the direction and the spirit of the meetings. And so now, VDOT and DRPT are taking this out for the first round of engagement with policy officials. So one meeting with City of Falls Church, one meeting with Fairfax County, one meeting with Arlington County. And the goal for tonight is to introduce the project to you all, and also to get council feedback on what items to include in the scope of the project moving forward.
Thank you very much. Welcome. I'm delighted to have you here this evening.
I'm Marsha Hamonson, Deputy District Administrator. Department of Transportation. I do have with me Susan Shaw, who's the Megaprojects Manager, Ho Chang, who is our Project Manager on the consulting side. Also, we have Todd Horsley with DRPT, and Valerie Pardo also with VDOT. First of all, thank you for this opportunity to brief you on this project. It's definitely a work in progress, very much at the beginning stages. We just started in December, and so we're just getting started with everything. So today, we do have some brief information, but we do want to use this opportunity to hear your feedback and to gain insight from you regarding your thoughts on I-66. So with that, I'll just go ahead and get started with the presentation. Just a brief outline of what is contained and what we are going to be going through tonight. We'll be looking at the I-66 multimodal study that was conducted in 2012, completed in 2012. And then there was a supplemental report that was done in 2013. And that supplemental report just basically took all of the most promising aspects of the overall study, and then did some further analysis on those particular studies. So just to recall, that particular study, there was four packages of various improvements, ranging from widening. We dealt with the transit enhancement, bike and pad, and also any of the transportation demand management features were also listed in there. And then the integrative corridor management system was also a part of that. But tonight, basically, we will go over our preliminary scope for the tolling element as well as the multimodal solutions. Future widening is also up for consideration. And then we are going to be embarking upon an environmental assessment of the project. One of the key things for us is the outreach, which we have not fully developed our outreach plan, and we will be working with your staff in order to do that. And any comments that you have tonight will be helpful regarding that. And then we have a very aggressive time schedule that this administration, our governor, and our Secretary of Transportation has given us, so we are proceeding with due prudence regarding this. So here we are. We're basically looking at I-66 inside the Beltway, from the Beltway to 29 Roslyn. We're stopping just shy of the bridge with this particular project because of all of the choices that we can actually make right at that bridge related to 50 and 29 coming in at that point as well. Anyone who's traveled on I-66 inside the Beltway realizes that there are issues that we are trying to address. One is congestion both in the eastbound and the westbound direction, congestion at the major interchanges along there, as well as non-HOV vehicles are restricted during that period of time, that two-and-a-half-hour window in the morning. Crowding on our metro rail system. And with the roadways being congested, also buses have to sit in that as well. So the bus service is impacted by the congestion along I-66 as well. Just looking at some of the other intermodal transfers, some of the challenges there. And then also looking at the bike pad and realizing that there is a lot of traffic, especially on the Custer's Trail, and wanting to make sure that we make those accommodations as well. One of the other keys is just looking at the entire bike pad system to basically look at the connectivity and how we can improve that. So this is some information, and this is just baseline assumptions that were made under the multimodal study that was done in 2012, 2013, which basically looked at the conversion of HOV 2 to HOV 3, which is consistent with the constrained long-range plan that's identified for 2020 right now. We have completed spot one. Spot two is on the way. Spot three is in our six-year plan, but it's not funded. It also assumed the completion of the Silver Line, both Phase 1 and 2. And also looking at the new and improved priority bus service along 66, 29, and 50. Also, there were other transportation demand management features that were also incorporated into the overall study. There was a study that was done by our sister agency, DRPT, back in 2009 that basically laid out some improvements as well. So we're also using that particular study as we move forward. And then looking at some of the metro core capacity issues, and these are the ones that are currently in the constrained long-range plan at this particular point. So basically, where we are and what we're basically using to as a baseline for moving forward with the I-66 improvement is those two studies that I indicated before. We're also recognizing that we do have a project with our active traffic management system that's ongoing. As I indicated, spot one is completed. Spot two is under construction. Bus on shoulders is a pilot project that we are implementing to use the shoulders along I-66, and we're hoping to have that up and running in March. As you know, we're going through a series of public information meetings currently on I-66 outside the Beltway. We've had two meetings last week. We have two coming up this week where we're looking at the improvements on I-66 outside the Beltway, from the Beltway to Haymarket, a 25-mile corridor, where we're looking at express lanes as well as other features, direct access to the express lanes along I-66. In December of this year, of last year, I'm sorry, Secretary Lane wrote a letter to the Chair of Arlington, Fairfax, and Falls Church requesting that we move forward, VDOT move forward with the multimodal study. So that's what has brought us here at this particular point. As a part of that, because of the timeframe associated with the overall schedule, we really needed to also incorporate this project in the constrained long-range plan. So we did make a presentation to the TPB Board at their last meeting and also their technical committee. In February, they will vote on the projects to be included in the conformity analysis for the upcoming CRL RP. We basically, as staff indicated, we got together twice so far, and one of the key reasons for doing that is to develop the purpose and need statement that you see before you. It was a very collaborative effort, and basically input from all the jurisdictions as well as the various agencies. Couple of key points in this purpose and need statement is the fact that we want to move more people instead of moving more vehicles, dealing with the enhanced connectivity within the corridor with the transit service that we have, reduce congestion, of course, and also increase travel options along the corridor. This is our initial project scope. It's definitely a work in progress. We do have another meeting scheduled for the 11th with our working group, which we will refine the scope even more upon obtaining input from this body as well as Arlington and Fairfax in helping us to shape this. But right now, one of the things that we heard in our initial meeting is that we do want to look at some quick, low-hanging-foot type of options from a multimodal standpoint along the corridor, even before we actually get into some of the more heavy lifting things such as tolling, which is the next item, and then looking at the enhanced transit service along the corridor. And when I said 66, we're also looking at 50 and 29 as the entire package as well, because that's actually what came out of the multimodal study that was done. Bike pad is definitely another important element that we will be looking at as well as well as the transportation demand management, TDM, features. And also looking at the integrative corridor management system, similar to what we have with the ATM project, ramp metering, also looking at speed harmonization and things like that. And then, of course, the widening is also being reviewed during the environmental study as well. So as far as the tolling, here is basically what we're proposing. Dynamic tolling during peak periods in both directions with the conversion of HOV 2 to HOV 3. Also, we're looking at the similar restrictions that we have regarding the heavy trucks that we have now. The facility off-peak will operate much as the facility does now, open to all. We're also looking at electronic tolling. Video tolling is also an option that we can actually look at. And then for the clean fuel vehicles, they will actually not enjoy that exemption. They will actually either, if they're in those lanes during those peak periods, they would actually have to pay or actually form a carpool. The one difference between the inside the Beltway versus the outside, the outside, we will have a private concessionaire engaged in that process. For inside, VDOT will actually own the facility. One of the key reasons is the last statement, and that is where we can actually use the excess funds to direct that into the multimodal solutions along the corridor in the future. And that's after we actually do take care of operations and maintenance costs associated with the facility. Any extra funds will then be directed into the multimodal solutions. So from a transit standpoint, as I mentioned, there was a study that was done by DRPT in 2009, which basically highlighted a lot of the improvements from a transit standpoint. And I'm sure that some of you have seen this study and probably read it in detail, but a lot of the appendices associated with that really outlined the various bus services that we're looking to enhance. But what we hope to do as a work group is just to validate a lot of the information that came out of that study as well. One of the other issues that we hear, and we haven't met with Womar as of yet, but we basically will be looking at the core capacity issues and how this project will assist in that as well. Just general overall from a bike pad, and we do have the list that your staff has just presented to us, so won't go into a lot of details, but we will be looking at bike pad facilities along the corridor and just trying to make sure that they work in concert with all of the other systems that we have out there to basically address the increased travel choices that we're trying to enforce. The other part of this is basically looking at transportation demand management and some of those features that many of you are familiar with, but the marketing and outreach of various programs, van pool programs, financial incentives, similar to what the federal government has as far as encouraging rides here, and also with commuter connections with guaranteed ride homes, just expanding on some of those programs as we move forward. As I indicated, the integrative corridor management, the ATM system, basically highlights a lot of these things. One of the key things in here after the speed harmonization is the park-and-ride lot facilities. Now, you have to basically drive in to determine whether there's a space, but we will be working on a plan to see how we can get some messaging out to the public before they actually enter into those park-and-ride lots to talk about parking spaces and helping that management of that. And looking at the signal prioritization for the priority bus service on some of the parallel routes such as 50 and 29. There's no secret, widening is definitely a sort of a controversial topic when you deal with I-66 inside the Beltway. The way we're approaching this particular project, and even as we're coding it within the constrained long-range plan, is that it's a two-phase project. One, dealing with the tolling and multimodal solutions, and then widening as the second phase in the outer years. Right now, we don't know exactly where that widening will take place. We're looking at an area from the Beltway to Fairfax Drive. So right now, we will be evaluating that as we move through the environmental process to make a determination as to what should be the correct limits of widening in the future. And the right-of-way, especially on the, although a lot of this can be done within, we think, within existing right-of-way, on the westbound side, there may be some right-of-way impacts there. So until we actually get into more of the preliminary design features, we won't know that as of yet. So our environmental document will basically take into consideration three key items. The tolling component that we will be advancing, as well as any of the multimodal improvements that require federal action. A lot of them do not, so those that don't, we will not take through the process, but we will definitely have them as a supporting document into the environmental assessment that we're moving forward with. And then we will be studying the widening aspect in that study as well. As far as outreach, we realize that this is a very important component for us. We will spend a lot of time outreach-ing, and any suggestions that you can give us on groups that we need to meet with, please by all means let us know that. We are actually, we have a very broad stakeholder group to include a lot of our federal partners, and basically reaching into the District of Columbia, Maryland. We've had one meeting with the Airport Authority. We've met with, have a meeting scheduled with DDOT in Maryland as well as we move forward to continue these dialogues. We will be setting up meetings with any elected official that would like to discuss these issues more in-depth, and meeting with homeowners associations as we move forward. We will have our website established for this particular project. We do have, our branding for this project is "Transform I-66 Inside the Beltway," joint project between VDOT and DRPT. And the key there is the last tagline, and that's "Investing in Multimodal Solutions," because that's the overall goal for this particular project. So here's the milestone schedule that we have right now. As I indicated, we are incorporating or pursuing incorporating this project into the constrained long-range plan. We will be doing a traffic and revenue study during the middle of 2015, and then still working with the staffs from the jurisdictions to prioritize the multimodal solutions that came out of the study before. The environmental document will be completed by the end of 2015 is our goal, and then a tolling design bill procurement by late 2015. Any gantries signs that we need to put up 2016, and then looking at actual toll day one 2017. So this is basically what we hope to achieve in a very short period of time. So next steps for us, as I indicated, that we will validate the information that came out of the 2012 and 2013 study. We will continue to refine the scope, develop stakeholder, and also outreach, our outreach program, as well as continue on with our traffic and revenue forecasts, and then basically prioritize all of those different solutions that we have, and looking at the excess toll revenue and how that will be used from now until 2040 within the quarter. So with that, that's basically where we are. I know it's very brief information. We don't have a lot of detail because it's only been less than a month since we've actually gotten this particular project, but we will be working to refine the scope and working with you to basically gain your input and feedback as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that informative presentation, and thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate your time and your interest in listening to what we have to say. To that end, why don't we open it up to comments and questions from council, maybe starting with the Vice Mayor, who's been the city's representative on a number of transportation bodies for a number of years. Mr. Snyder, do you have any comments, questions?
Sure. Thanks a lot, Mayor. The first one is really an internal question for us. I'd like this scheduled for a regular public meeting of city council as soon as possible so that the citizens will have the ability to look at this information and comment, because there's an awful lot in here. A lot of it's connected to a lot of things, so hopefully we can get that done as soon as possible, because for those from VDOT, during our work sessions, it's normally not an opportunity for public input, so I think we need to get that. So let me give you some initial reactions. The first is that it's very light on transit specifics on transit and very heavy on highway widening, tolling, et cetera. And I think a key factor here is that Metro's infrastructure needs to be dramatically enhanced. We had, the smoke incident aside, there were several incidents where people were left on the platform for hours during inclement weather because of a single-track problem. The inability to have, the current inability to have redundancy on the rail system is a fundamental issue with certainly reliability and potential safety ramifications, and yet I don't see anything here about a third track, if you will, another tunnel, if you will, under the Potomac River. I think if you're going to toll and you're going to put in aggressive HOV requirements, you simply have to have an effective transit option. And unfortunately, we've seen all too often where that transit option is not effective. So that would be a very large point I would make about it. I'll leave it there for right now and ask our colleagues to comment on it from there. Thanks.
Okay. Let's open it up to comments, questions from other folks. Mr. Baruch?
Thank you very much, and thanks for being here with us this evening. Just to add to Vice Mayor Snyder's point about getting our citizens engaged in this, I think it's really important, based on what I'm hearing, to make sure in our Chamber of Commerce, partners are here this evening, so I'm glad that they're hearing this presentation. But it's going to be really important to get their input on this, and I'll get into some reasons why I think that's such, and that has a lot to do with the tolling provisions that I'm hearing about. That could definitely impact how people are coming into the city. And I think some work needs to be done on capturing that data about how many clientele or patrons of our businesses rely on 66 during the peak hours to get in and out, and what effects that would have on businesses if that's discouraged with some of what I'm hearing. So I think it's going to be really important to hear from the business community that's already having difficulty, struggling in getting through the recession. I don't want to have some impacts on them simply because we're trying to move traffic more quickly through the corridor. Just kind of getting to just a point that I need a little bit more clarification on. Looking at the milestones, it leads me to think that some of these are FAIA-complete, and they're more to just get the public engaged in what's coming their way. Is that fair, or is VDOT looking more at getting stakeholders to weigh in on the various options, and things may change or come off the table?
Definitely, it is a very open and transparent process. The reason why we have basically put at least the milestone schedule together is because our administration, our governor, basically highlighted some key projects that he wanted us to look at, and this is basically, the dates are pretty much aligned with that, but nothing is off the table, nothing has been decided. Yes, we do have the multimodal study that we will build upon. Some of it, as I indicated, we will have to validate. There are other things that may come on the table as well. The multimodal study, yes, was a starting point in that letter from the secretary, but we will continue to work with your staff, and hopefully on the 11th have a more in-depth discussion as to what that scope would be.
Great. That's refreshing to know, because I think what may come of this conversation and future conversations is a little bit more analysis, and if things are already done, then I don't think we need to extend the resources of various groups on weighing in on decisions that have been made. One thing I'll mention, just looking at sort of the statement, so it's a big concentration on moving people through the corridor, which I appreciate as someone who occasionally drives I-66 during various rush hours. But I think something also needs to be said about environmental impacts. I'll let Mr. Z talk probably more about that. But there seems to be a flavor, and maybe it's sort of lost because a lot of this actually helps with environmental issues, but I think some acknowledgement that intermodal reducing congestion has an environmental impact that's good for the region and also outside the region is important in what we're trying to accomplish, that it's not simply about moving Couple other points along that same line. I do have some concerns about not having provisions for clean vehicles. I, for one, drive a hybrid vehicle. I'm not a daily user of I-66 during those hours. But I would say, and again, I can only speak anecdotally, that was certainly one factor that I think leads to people buying hybrid vehicles, along with the good environmental impacts that clean vehicles have. And I think that we need to do more on those fronts. And I know that Virginia, unfortunately, unlike some other states, has been sort of not on the forefront of clean technologies, whether it be automobiles or other green fuels or sources of energy. So I think some further thought needs to be given to that. And then two, on the excess revenue, I'll say a couple things. Since you're looking at folks who are elected officials, I do have some concerns about taxing or tolling. And my starting point on that is that I have some level of tolerance for tolling when it comes to new infrastructure being built. I can sort of look at it and say, okay, we've got hot lanes that are being built. It's got to be paid somehow. There's difficulty in taxing, et cetera, for those. So I can kind of see that argument, and it's one that I can subscribe to. But in my view, our citizens have already paid for 66, one way or another. our citizens have already paid for 66, one way or another, and it sort of sounds as a little bit of a tax when we're talking about tolling, and what I worry about is that it's going to impact our lowest wage earners, et cetera, more than others, rather than sort of people can absorb that toll, and I just have some equity concerns about that. And again, I differentiate that than some views that I have when we're building new infrastructure. So I do have some concerns there, which leads me to think, you know, sort of what is the money going to be going towards, and who is it going to be benefiting ultimately? I think some thought needs to be given to that. If it's subsidizing to reduce some of the costs of, say, Metro, which we're seeing escalating all the time, and pushing people into that direction, I think the equity arguments may be a little bit better handled. But I'll say frankly, if it's simply going to outside of the Beltway users to get them to move through our corridor more quickly, that, that seems not where I'm headed. So you're going to end up in a situation where our residents or people visiting our businesses are going to end up paying a tax that's ultimately going to be affecting people living in, you know, outside the Beltway areas for their intermodal, and I would have some, some concerns there. Not to say that that's not important to build the multimodal there, but the question of where is the funding going to go, and who is it going to benefit, both as far as locations of that intermodal, and whether it's going to hit on the people who I think the tolls are going to significantly impact the most. But I'll stop there, probably said a lot, and leave it to my other colleagues, and then follow up if I've got other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our other council members want to speak, Mr. Z and then Ms. Oliver?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for giving a part of your evening to come out tonight. I know all those that required down in Abbey, look forward to watching it tonight, and you just have to catch it a little bit later, I guess. I, I'm in harmony with the statements from my colleagues here, and I would add to that that there needs to be an increased focus on, on multimodal and the transition from, from traveling either bus or rail to transition to the inner, inside the Beltway systems. Even though this characterizes inside the Beltway, of course, we know it's both outside and inside, and that transition from outside to inside is very important. I am mindful also of your understatement that widening is a bit of a controversy. I think it's quite a bit of a controversy, and I'm sensitive to the concerns that people have about quality of life, air quality, and the impact on the environment if you go forward with the widening. And I want to believe that the environmental assessment that you're probably going to start on shortly, getting it all done 2015 is probably a little bit ambitious, but you can be sure that people will want to know what are the contact points that they can provide input, and want to make sure the staff engages our citizens in providing our piece of input as well. And finally, I want to say that a lot of traffic originates from these areas, inside the Beltway, if you will, and there are many bikers among us. The mayor, for example, bicycles, I believe, frequently. He's kind of a hardcore biker. He's actually fallen off a bicycle, and
It's trading wheels off.
About, about time, too. So, so I think that, you know, if you can be sensitive to, to those that actually want to bike and walk, this is a pleasant journey into DC. Those that jog as well, so. The less emphasis we can put on accommodating people moving in cars from driving 50 miles away to, through our city, through Arlington and through Fairfax, and actually be able to, to take advantage of the other modes of transportation, I think would be wonderful. And would, you know, at the end of all this, if you're trying to position this as a system for the future that accommodates all of us, that we have to realize there are going to be less people driving. In the future, we're going to have autonomous cars, we're going to have all kinds of modes that probably aren't being considered here, so if you're going to build a system, let's not build it for 2020, let's build it for 2050. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Ms. Oliver?
I mainly just wanted to echo what Vice Mater, Vice Mayor Snyder said about the details that you've presented tonight are too auto-centric. There's, there's a lot of detail around the tolling and the widening, and not enough detail about the, the multimodal, the bicycle, the pedestrian, and the transit, and I would like to see more detail about how that's going to be addressed. And I have a different concern about the tolling, because I know one of the side effects of putting tolls in place is that people look for alternative ways to get to where they want to go if they don't want to pay the toll. And unfortunately, Falls Church, because of how we're located with Route 7 and Route 29, we already have a lot of cut-through traffic, and we see it in our neighborhoods. And I, I'm, you know, the, the thought that comes to my mind when I hear about tolling is, oh, we're going to get more traffic, and every time we talk about development here, that's what people get really upset about, is the volume of traffic on our streets, which can't handle that, as we particularly try to convert to a more walk-friendly environment, bicycle-friendly environment. And so, you know, there are benefits if more people are coming and stopping in our businesses, but the reality is, we've got more traffic on some of our roads that kids are bicycling to school on than we are already happy with. So I guess I would like more emphasis about how else we're going to handle that.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Are there other folks on council who'd like to make a, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. Thank you all. Welcome to the city. What I hear my fellow councilors saying, I'm going to interpret this way, we are trying to help you all build a transportation network for 2050, and at least from my perspective, it would be helpful to have as much information as you can gather up about expectations about population size and distribution over the next three decades. In the 30 years that I've lived in this area, 35 years, I guess, that I've lived in this area, I've seen it transform, you know, pretty dramatically from a sleepy suburb with a I-66 not very heavily used running through it to, you know, what we see here today. So 30 years from now, what are we going to see? I mean, if I just had to throw a dart and guess, I would say that this area is going to become more like, you know, what you see outside New York City, outside Philadelphia, where suburbs that are on the, you know, middle and outer ring are places where you really do not get in your car to drive downtown to the urban core. I mean, you can do that if you live in the Jersey suburbs, but, you know, you're going to be sitting in an enormous traffic jam, getting through the Lincoln Tunnel, and you're going to pay, you know, 15 bucks as a toll, and when you get in there, the car's going to cost you $65 to park, and so you figure out, you know, pretty quickly, you're going to take the train. And so that would lead me, if I were just guessing, to say that we would want to have, you know, some sort of additional rail capacity, either a, you know, an express train or a, you know, a local bullet train that would take people from far out. And when I say far out, I mean, you know, as far out as Berryville and, and even near in West Virginia to get into the city. And then, as several people have mentioned here, we just, we don't have any place to put that under the scenario that we're looking at here. You know, we're talking about widening the road. Well, I would not, I think, widen the road if I had to guess. I would use that space, whatever it is, for some sort of rail capacity. So, and the only other point I wanted to make was, as you bring more information to us, it'd be helpful, I think, to hear more about Route 50. I've always thought, and I've heard other people in town say, it seems a bit of an underused resource in terms of, you know, intersection improvements that could make traffic move through faster, you know, truck carrying capacity, if not heavy trucks, at least, you know, some trucks. I'm not quite sure why. It is decreed from above that there shall not ever be trucks on Route 50, but it, it puts a burden on Route 7 and Route 29 that does not seem to me to be equitable. So those are just two thoughts. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Other comments? I've got a few then. First, I'd like to echo the comments of my colleagues. I think we do need an integrated approach, and the reliance on the car, I think, in some ways is misplaced. For our city, we don't want to create that, such a high toll that people are taking our city streets like Route 7. I think that's going to happen as costs go up, as requirements go up, and I think we have to be very mindful of that. One thing I think the city really needs is a second entrance to the East Falls Church Metro. And so, as you probably know, the East Falls Church Metro, the entrance faces Arlington. It doesn't face Lee Highway, where there's a whole lot of traffic and potential bus traffic and all sorts of intermodal access, and so I would suggest to you that that be something you consider, is that second entrance to Metro, East Falls Church Metro. We've talked a little bit about bikes, bike share. There's no bike share at East Falls Church or the West Falls Church Metro. We have a bike trail that runs through the middle of our city, W O N D, which is heavily used. It could be better used to get people off of roads and onto Metro or just on the bike trail itself. So I would encourage you to really focus. I think you get a lot of bang for your buck when you're talking about improving a bike trail versus trying to add a lane to a major highway. Also, I wonder, is this idea of going to HOV3, has that been decided? I mean, it sort of sounds like a fait accompli. Has it been decided, or is that still in the balance?
Just based on the constraint long-range plan, it is, it's recommended that it convert to HOV3 by 2020, and it's been pushed from, I think, the first date was 2010, and then pushed out to 2020. So although it is not definite, because nothing is totally definite, but that's the pursuit that we would be, the direction that we will be pursuing.
I mean, I think you've heard already from folks that we in the city don't want to be a place where people are going through, you know, in other words, who are blowing through on 66. We want to be able to have folks come here, businesses, come to businesses, residents come to and from this place, and so I think making it harder to get on 66, which in some ways is our major thoroughfare, you know, we have Route 7, which is heavily used, and the traffic is horrible on Route 7. 66 is another way for city residents and businesses to be utilized to and from, and so I have some concern about that. Frankly, I just have concerns in general about hot lanes. I have to tell you, I rode with the, the COG representative, who I think used to work for VDOT, who's now the COG transportation person, to an event, a couple hours in the car, and it took me a really long time to figure out how hot lanes work. I'm not sure I really truly understand. Let me ask you this, so for example, if I were to try to get on the toll road, as you proposed, with three people in my car, A, do I need, even though I meet the requirements, do I still need a car, a little hot lane card? And then B, how do you know how many people are in the car? For example, if it's three, doesn't have to pay a toll, how does the computer know how many people are inside my car, my minivan, for example? How does that work mechanically?
On 95, and I'm going to let Susan basically take this one, because she's working, she's worked on the 95 quarter, but we do have an EZ Pass and EZ Pass Flex that you basically will turn on and off.
So it's just, you need an EZ Pass Flex, as Renee said, so you just switch it to HOV3, and then we have law enforcement that knows when you pass them. They can tell that you've elected the HOV3. So right now, we're just doing visual, you know, enforcement of that.
So in five years, for example, right now, there's no, you don't need a card, you don't need anything, you just have to have two people in your car to get HOV2. In the future, it won't just be HOV3, you'll have to get a card, so anyone wants to use the lanes during rush hour will have to have a card. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Let me see if I've got anything else. Funding, what's the source of funding for all this? Do you have funding lined up, and if so, what is the amount, and how's all that going to play out?
Funding has not been identified at this particular point. We do, we're in discussions with our administration regarding use, the use of toll revolving funds, which are state funds, but that has not been decided as of yet. So hopefully, within the next month or so, we will have some definitive answer on the actual funding mechanism we will use.
And when will we know the details of this plan? I mean, I saw your schedule, but it was still unclear to me, I was looking at when we would know, for example, what intermodal proposals you have. I mean, we've got the big stuff, the, you know, third lane and that sort of thing, but how about the details of this plan?
Yeah, the details, as I indicated, our next meeting with staff will be on the 11th of February, and that's where we're going to roll up our sleeves and really get into the details regarding this particular study and those things that we can advance. And then after a series of meetings, hopefully over a month timeframe, basically prioritizing that so that we can come back, yes, with a fuller list. We realize that we didn't have a lot of information tonight on that multimodal part of it, because we just haven't had the time to sit down with staff and really scope out that aspect of the, of what we're looking at. From the tolling and the widening, it was very simple, because that was basically identified in the multimodal study. We have tables and tables of other multimodal solutions that we will analyze and basically validate, and then prioritize from there. So I would say we would be back to you within a month with more detail regarding what that will look like.
And one of the first steps is going to be to do a, a revenue study. I mean, we don't really have a clear picture of what revenues we're talking about. I think it's probably clear that we know that the list of improvements, all the trail, there was over, I think there were 60 different trail improvements identified in the study, quite a number of transit routes for improvement, of access at metro stations, lots of things that were listed. It's pretty clear that we will not have all of the money for all of those things, that we will need to prioritize. And so I think that's part of why you're not seeing some of that detail in terms of exactly, you know, what's in there. It is all in these two studies, but now we'll need to look and see, get the revenue forecast, see what that looks like, and then work with staff and you all, the public, to figure out what we can accomplish.
Okay, Mr. Z?
Yeah, I just, a couple thoughts came to mind, so I know you guys probably hate Mission Creep, but next time you brief the governor or you're in lunch with LaVara Stone, just tell him there's going to be one council member here that when you do your EA or even when you're taking public comments, two things are part of this collaboration. First one is 45,000 cars move up and down Route 7 every day, and if you get this built, there'll be likely more, so we're going to look for traffic calming or traffic reduction measures. To wish in mind that we actually do something with Route 7 to make it more than just cut through. The second one is you help us enhance the bike path that goes through our city. I think those are two very small asks for cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Z. Ms. Connolly?
I just have a quick question. I'm echoing what a lot of others have said, but on the tolling, my question is, what's the purpose of the tolling? Is it to reduce traffic flow? Is it to raise revenue? A combination of both?
I think a combination of both. I'm going to let Susan answer.
Right, I mean, and one thing I would say is, this would be congestion priced, so it wouldn't be just a single toll, and that's part of the requirement of the federal highway, is that we do have an HOV facility, which is moving as many, you know, people in, you want to have as many van pools, car pools, and buses, too. I mean, that's one of the other things, is that this corridor consistently breaks down even during peak hours when you have HOV rules in place. And so things like the exemption for hybrids, it's not in perpetuity, it's planned to be sunsetted, it was only being used when there was capacity in the facility, which we don't really consistently have today. So the congestion pricing, the toll, you know, gives you a way to control the flow. You want to maintain a 45 mile an hour speed limit for all of your high occupancy vehicles, so that is the goal of the congestion pricing.
But the funding does, you know, the, the revenue and investing back into the multimodal solutions is also an important key.
And then how does the, you mentioned that out of the Beltway tolling is a different animal altogether, with an outside vendor and a contract, but it's the same road, and maybe you're not down to those details, but that would be a concern of mine. It's just, how does that work for people?
Yes, we've been asked that, and we definitely plan on coordinating. It just doesn't, 66 doesn't stop at the Beltway. We recognize that people continue, so we will coordinate with those two projects very closely.
Mr. Baruch?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just circling back on, you know, how we began this discussion with Vice Mayor Snyder's points about the need for public engagement, and how to go about that, as I'm sort of listening more and more about, to this. I agree with the Vice Mayor's point about needing to start as soon as possible to have a public engagement. But I don't think it's one meeting. I think that there's going to be at least one or two, because if we go out publicly right now with what we're hearing, and I understand, you know, a lot of the revenue assessments, et cetera, haven't been made. But I would just hate there to be a sense, for example, oh, you know, and I'm saying hypothetically, the community comes out, the business community comes out and says, you know, tolling, great, you know, makes sense, X, Y, and Z. And then we find out the revenue projections are very minimal to none. And all of a sudden, it's not going to lead to really any benefits on the intermodal side. And everybody's disappointed and goes, what happened? Or they're, all the money is pushed out to other jurisdictions. And yet, we're getting the traffic that you've heard on Broad, et cetera, and hurting our business community. That would be a recipe for really not having an informed public discussion. So I think, you know, if I were to think through how this needs to happen, I do think that our community needs to hear what's going on, and get briefed on it, and get some initial round of public comment. But as we start getting more information, specifically if we're talking about tolling, where the money is going, how is it going to be utilized, that, we need to start looking at the trade-offs before we really get public reaction to that. And sort of having only part of the equation, I don't think is going to be helpful. So I'll leave it at that. But I think this is, you know, very good initial work. But I think some data points are certainly needed. And I just wanted to echo some of the concerns that you've heard other council members make about the impact this is going to have on Route 7, and what are we doing about Route 7. And another ask I would have, and staff may be able to find this without going to VDOT, because I know how busy everybody is. But again, I query whether there's other examples when there's already been infrastructure built, and we've layered tolling on top of that, rather than sort of tolling, hot lanes, et cetera, new infrastructure being built, and how other jurisdictions that have maybe done this, inside Virginia, outside of Virginia, doesn't need to be limited. Sort of what are other ways that various communities have done it? And again, I'm looking for examples of where the road's been built. We're not talking about new improvements that are going to be paid by the tolling, but simply as a way of price pointing, you know, whatever the new buzz term is for that, for trying to dynamically, I guess, control what people pay, et cetera, during those hours. So be interested in getting examples of what other communities are doing, and whether other people are doing this.
And just one point of clarification, any excess revenue will be for the multimodal improvement inside the beltway, not outside the beltway. So very concentrated within the three jurisdictions.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Let me just try to conclude, and try to draw an analogy here. The disease that we're trying to address here is, you've got too many people in their cars that are stuck interminably, day in and day out. At least, that's what we've been told, the whole congestion issue. Okay. Now, I don't happen to think that should be the only goal. I think Council Member Z was absolutely right, air quality and their other goals. But that's the one that everyone seems to be focused on. Okay, so you have this disease. Well, you can treat the symptoms. You can pave over all of Northern Virginia, and all you're going to do is going to create demand for further out. And so widening, in my view, isn't an answer to anything. It just treats the symptoms at the very best, or gives people the sense that maybe it's going to be a little better for me. The second thing you ought to be careful about is, you don't treat the disease when your side effects are actually as bad or worse than the disease. And I think some council members have talked about forcing cars off 66 to avoid the tolls, to thereby making traffic more impassable on other highways. The third approach is, you actually treat the cause of the issue. And in my view, the only way you're going to do that is to come up with things like a true regional bus system, a truly effective metro system, and the other alternatives locally and regionally to use of motor vehicles. Otherwise, all you're doing is very expensively treating the symptoms of a fundamental disease. And in some cases, attempting to treat it actually creates side effects that are as bad as the disease. So in thinking about this, I've tried to put all this together. I've watched, I've watched these things evolve. You know, you've got to feel for people that are stuck in traffic every night. I mean, I went out to the, outside the beltway, in part, to experience what people experience, because basically, I can avoid that in a typical day using Metro. And it took me an hour to get from Falls Church to 50 and 66. Basically, you could probably get there faster on horseback. So I appreciate what people are feeling. But if we just give people the sense that we're doing something, and we're not actually getting to the underlying causes, we're spending a lot of money, and we're really failing in our fundamental obligation. And I think that's what a lot of the conversation has been about tonight. Let's look analytically at what the issue is. And frankly, in my view, it should require an increase in the gas tax. I mean, part of why we're here, part of why we're tolling everything, is the state has adamantly refused to do what it needed to do to keep up with infrastructure. And so we're trying to piece together things, put Band-Aids on things, and using tolling. And the analogy to tolling is sort of like an old, bad cellphone contract, where they give you the free cellphone, but you're stuck for two years, in a contract that's really a lousy consumer buy. In this case, you, you give, because you won't raise the gas tax, you have to go to the private sector, the private sector fronts the money, and oh, by the way, the users then pay ridiculous amounts of money to use it. So I think fundamentally, we really want to solve the transportation problems. We don't want to create new ones. We don't want to solve, or worse yet, give the appearance of solving the congestion issue for people who live further out. And the reality is, all we're doing is spending a lot of money widening highways that will become congested almost as soon as they're widened. Or we create unintended negative consequences for closer-in areas like Falls Church or Arlington. And we haven't solved the underlying problem, which is to create an effective, convenient, reliable, and safe set of alternatives for use of the motor vehicles. And if we fail to do that, in my view, we've failed to solve the problem. So.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Why don't we go ahead then? First off, thank you very much for coming out this evening. We understand this is going to be an ongoing dialogue, and we look forward to hearing back from you, and maybe another evening where we can get you back here and have some more public input and comment, not just from council. And hopefully, a time when you have some more information to convey to us. But we look forward to that day, which we hope will be in the near future. Why don't we go ahead and take a five-minute break, and let our VDOT folks head on out, and our Chamber of Commerce folks come on in. But again, thank you so much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
If we can, let's go ahead and get started. It's my pleasure to, I think for the first time ever, to welcome the Chamber of Commerce, the Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, to a joint session with the city council. So welcome. I know we're all very excited to have you all here, and hear your perspective on our downtown, and our business districts, and what we can do as a community to try to strengthen them. So we are excited about that, and we want your input. Two things in particular that we had discussed, speaking about tonight. One is our improvements in the downtown business districts. As you know, the city council has allocated a portion of the water sale proceeds to potentially make some improvements in our downtown area. And so one thing we want to do tonight is reach out to you and get your thoughts and input on to what improvements you'd like to see, and how we can work together to affect those. We have had some meetings previously with folks from the chamber. I don't know if it's formally from the chamber. We met on January 9th with a group of folks at Walter Phillips. And we've also had individual meetings with property owners. I know the city manager's been involved. I have been involved to some extent as well. With the idea that we can work together to improve our downtown, and form a partnership, both public and private partnership, to really see some exciting things happen in our downtown area. Secondly, more broadly, we had hoped tonight to identify some ways that the city can help businesses to succeed here in the city, to address concerns that may be lingering, or concerns that have come up over the years, that may not have been addressed, or can be done better. And so that's another part of this evening's conversation. But we think some great things can happen in our downtown. I think the city council as a whole is very bullish on our business community. And so again, we're very excited to have you here. What, I don't know if you'd like to direct the discussion at all, but I think maybe the first place to start would be just a discussion of some of the improvements that were considered for our downtown area, and maybe get some input. I understand the chambers done some surveying of their own with respect to those issues.
Well, that was a great introduction to what I think has led to this point for this discussion. Mike Collins with our Public Works Department has worked with others in city staff to try to put together some proposals to just get people thinking about what we could do with, in terms of sidewalk improvements, better lighting, making the area more attractive, more walkable, safer for pedestrians. And we talked about that with council at your meeting earlier in the year. And so we'll still continue to refine those numbers. We won, from the council's last discussion, I think one of the really key points the council wanted to make, and it's worth restating here, is that these investments, we don't want to make them in a vacuum. We want to make them in partnership with the business community, so that any dollar that's spent is geared towards something that's going to benefit the business community. And will also be done in concert, or in sync with potential investments that the business community is making on private property as well, so that those dollars can multiply and complement each other. And so that's what this engagement has been about, and we'll take it a step further tonight.
Joe, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Well, first of all, obviously, thanks so much for this. This is great. You know, as you pointed out, it's a first time. It's very historic. So we're on the cutting edge here. And we need to thank the city staff, because more of the background on this is, you know, you all generously have considered setting aside some of the revenues from the water sale towards improving the, we're calling it the crossroads, 7 and 29 area there, since that's, you've got to start somewhere, and that's our most important visible intersection. And staff went through and picked, you know, they worked incredibly hard. They picked things that they all thought could be done, and could be done without a whole lot of study, or background chatter, or studying it to death kind of thing. And then brought it to us, and gave us a list, the same list, and asked us for our input. We then, we, we, then put together a survey that went out, and we got 73 responses in just five days. We had about 30% of the responses came from businesses within that two-block area, another 30% from businesses in the city, but just, you know, outside of that area. A few, 10, 12% were from businesses that were outside the city proper, but obviously still concerned with business in the city. And then about 20%, 25% from just regular old folks, customers who have it, who have interaction with it. I'll note, you know, the amount is, money that I think we're talking about is not huge. 500,000, maybe, maybe three-quarters of a million. And so the results of the survey, I believe, reflect the respondents and the chambers' notion that we recognize it's not a lot of money, and that it won't make major, it's not enough to do major investments. And with that in mind, you'll find that some of the results focus on sort of very low-hanging fruit. When we were looking at the list of things that staff put together that might be done with a small amount of money and a quick amount of time, we realized there were really sort of three categories. We broke it down into things that were, of the list, things that were really maintenance items, that were deferred maintenance items, things that we didn't feel qualified as an investment. And then, of course, investments, short-term investments and long-term investments, investments that could be done, hopefully, within, you know, nine to 12 months, and then investments that would take longer than that to implement. Maybe they would have some study involved. And so what you're seeing, as it's being passed around now, are the results of that poll. And we, in turn, we then broke it down into three priority levels. I should note that we also recognize, as I say, we broke it apart into maintenance items, and then what we felt were really investment. The maintenance items do need doing. And it's the chambers' notion that, one way or another, hell or high water, the city needs to figure out how to get these, and these sorts of things into a general operating budget, year after year after year, so that we don't end up with what we've got now, where it's that tawdry look. That said, if the money has to come out of the water funds, so be it. And the number one maintenance item, and that priority one list, is to repair the concrete sidewalks, just because they're so, I mean, it's a hazard. It's a hazard, it's a liability, and it really impedes the walkability. You can't walk if you're falling on your face. In terms of short-term improvements, if we could convert all of the streetlights in the commercial areas of Broad and Washington to the LED, and there was some major discussion about that, I mean, everybody seemed to feel that it can be done at a reasonably, with reasonable cost. And as we learned from our survey, lots of people are really excited about it. It certainly makes the evening walkability in that area much greater than it is now. Really, even without people, it will enliven the place. So cheap trick. Add bike racks, which sounds simple, but as, as you know, more and more of the world is going to bikes. And it's doing so rapidly, and you need a place to put them. And if there's no place to put them at the end of your journey, oftentimes, you won't make the journey. Right? And wayfinding, bigger and more welcoming signs to the city itself. It's really easy, I mean, we all know where we're going, because we spend so much time here. But if you're from out of the area, the simplest of things, like being stopped while you're on West Broad and asked where Route 7 is. It sounds silly, but it's simple, it's easy, it's cheap, and it will make people feel much friendlier about coming to the city. A longer-term investment would be, and this is obviously going to require some study and discussion, to revise some of the signing options for the downtown businesses, to make them perhaps a little more consistent, and a little more appealing. Again, that's a longer term, that's not a nine-to-12-month gig. When we move into priority two, again, you know, the maintenance is on the top of the list. Weeding pressure walks, the sidewalks, easy hit. Repair and refresh all the crosswalks. Again, thinking of low-hanging fruit, and a way to make walking around easier, friendlier. And if you're driving around, to feel you're driving around in a town that cares. Even though you're driving over those crosswalk hatchings, they're still a reflection of the care and concern of the city as a whole, we feel. And the tree pit beds need to be refreshed. You know, the arborists can figure out how to do that, but the broad swashes of mud that exist now don't say the best things about our city. Short-term improvements, capital improvement kind of things, make provisions for exterior electric access in those same beds, or somewhere near them. Make provisions for exterior water access, so that things can be cleaned, and things can be watered. And in longer-term investments, the chamber feels that you might continue to investigate the redesign of the public park and the 100 block of Park Avenue, assuming, of course, that you would not be losing, and perhaps even expanding, access to the public parking from Broad Street. And we should be looking to develop, fund, bike share, in whatever fashion. I mean, maybe we can get it from VDOT in there. There are 66- Their 66 redo, dream on. Priority three, just, you know, maybe, can meteorites fall from the sky. In a priority three, in the maintenance items, you'll see that we've, we've got right on top there, refresh the pole planters when they're working. It's a great and wonderful thing. It's a very unique thing. It's, you don't drive through many cities where you see that, and it doesn't require huge investment. And of course, you've heard this before, keep the trees trimmed so that the retail businesses can have their signage seen. Short, low, this is priority three, in the short-term improvement section, you'll see widening side box on the 100 block of North Washington, and all of the things that might take a little more work, that the chamber feels would take a little more work, all of the crosswalk curb cut work. Although we can, we're back to thermoplastic markings on the crosswalks, that's something that can be done with very little help and investment. We've had, the hotspot parking that we did a couple of years ago has, despite everybody's concern that it would never be, it's a 15-minute parking designed for areas that have retail businesses that need in-and-out. And there was, when we proposed it, there was great concern that no one would pay any attention to the 15 minutes that would become all-day parking. But in fact, that hasn't happened, and it's proved very effective for those two areas. And we think that's another, you know, easy fix to address those same needs throughout the city, plus a couple of bucks for signs. Customer service training for the development staff keeps coming, keep seem to be resurfacing. This isn't in the crossroads improvement area, but it is, when you're talking, Mr. Mayor, about digs and rubs with the business community, this, year after year, continues to seem to come up. So, longer-term investments, moving down the list here, perhaps we could secure public art through the catch clause there. It's, you know, this is, this is not an easy thing. It will require some study. A pedestrian signal at North Washington, the south side of Park Avenue, again, we recognize that's a more of a, you know, that takes some studying, it takes some dollars. And just generally speaking, working with WAMADA to make schedules more reliable. I know WAMADA has their own impetus, going to clean up the bus routes, shorten the delivery times. Add bike lanes. Bikes, bikes keep coming up. If there's a way to add bike lanes, and we're not saying where, just get it started and make it look like the city is paying attention to what's going on in the world around them, where everyone else is adding bike lanes and bike racks. Much longer term, a public parking deck, just a thought, just saying, you know? And then, at the very bottom, you'll see a section we've got for notable comments. The survey was, was rather scientific, you know, yes, no, how do you feel about this on one to 10, but there was also an area where people could ramble. And some of the ramblings were interesting. There were a number of comments regarding our brick sidewalks and pavers, generally agreed that they are slick and dangerous. Some felt very strongly about it. A few comments recommending that all the brick sidewalks be removed, felt that strongly about it. I will say there was absolutely zero interest. One of the items that staff suggested was the replacement of the signal arms that are at the intersection of 7 and 29. And there was zero interest in that at all. I don't think anybody even knew there was anything, is anything wrong with them. Sorry, Mike.
Broad, yeah, see?
I don't think his feelings are hurt. From an engineer, engineer loves those signals. They're functional.
They are now. They're rewired.
One needs to go. Broad street access to that public parking on the north side in the 100 block was considered very, very important. I know it's just a drive aisle, but it's very important. Removing the median, this was interesting, removing the median strip or allowing left turns onto Park Place from 29 was, over and over again, came up as considered dangerous and a traffic hazard. But depending on what goes down the road in the future, that may have to be adjusted. But right now, we, the chamber feels that it should be backburnered. LED lighting was considered as a cost-saving over time, not just an aesthetic improvement. People, funny, people like saving money because it means less taxes for them. Isn't that interesting? Some respondents noted that improvements were also needed elsewhere along Broad and Washington, that perhaps, you know, this is just a thought, but it's, if we can do something quick and dirty in the crossroads area, maybe the thing to do next is to go through the, the business areas in town and do little work areas. You know, maybe there are four or five blocks big where you can look at exactly these sorts of things, and we'll be able to get things done in a relatively short order.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anyone else on your side of the table, Gary, Sally, Barb, who'd like to make any comments or add anything to what Joe said? Barb?
I think it's a culmination of a lot of things coming together that improves the downtown especially, I'm sorry, I'll start again. I think it's a culmination of a lot of details that have been covered in the report that make a difference when they're all happening, you know, in a relatively short period of time, and that is, you know, short-term and immediate improvements. And it really shows, you know, when you put a new crosswalk in, it really is bright. And I know the thermoplast, I think Robert Goff said they held up about three years, even though they're rated for seven, but we have a lot of traffic. And when the roads get hot, it wears, you know, more easily. So, I don't know when they're scheduled. I think they're scheduled for next year, according to Robert, or later this year. So, having a schedule that allows us to keep on top of the maintenance so that it's budgeted for, based on what we're experiencing, not what it says on the, you know, expectation of, you know, you may get seven years out of this, but if we're only getting two and a half, then we have it on rotation like that, so we don't get sort of seedy looking, you know, at the crossroads. I also think that it's, it's, I can't stress enough how important it is, whether it's a new building or whatever, is that we have a lockbox or something with water bib that, you know, you turn with the hose key and electrical outlets, so that there's provision for things like watch night, remember doing street performers or something like that, that there's a place to put it. And when you think about it, when the infrastructure's going in and it's not as expensive, if you have to retrofit later. And so those are the kind of things that we're noticing now. There's electric and water in the municipal park, so, you know, that way I can, you know, if we were to do the baskets, that would be, you know, easier to water that way instead of having to get a water truck. And also, we have a permit for the, the city has a permit for the fire hydrant on the 300 block, no, 200 block of that same side of Broad Street where Dual Hoppers is. So, those can be accessed at no cost, and so therefore, you know, that saves some right there. But it's really difficult when you don't have water. There's only two buildings, 125 and whatever the building is that faces Lee Highway and Park on North Washington, just those two buildings. And it's, it really, those are the buildings that really look great this year with the planting, even though it went a little bit late. They had the Richmondensis begonias and the Lysamachia, which came down over the edge, and it just recently turned it sort of a brownish color, but it was a really pretty green and it was dripping down. So, I like to have that, so we can have a really nice display. The businesses, we tried this year, as was recommended, and that didn't turn out so well. So, there's, the area that's on one side of the street, the west side of the street's under some shade, so they didn't dry out as much, and they have succulents in them, so it doesn't dry out as often. And so they didn't require as frequent watering. We only watered six supplemental times, you know, to add to rainfall. So, it's not a lot of watering, and that's the thing that, you know, we like to get the volunteers to help with. So, at some point, I'd like the city to take it over again, but I'm happy to stick with it until that happens.
Sally?
I just wanted to say, the joint committee meeting y'all had with the EDA, I think a couple of people expressed some concerns about the fact that none of these items are big and sexy and are going to have any real direct impact immediately on economic development. But I don't think this money allows anything big and sexy. Number one, and number two, I think when you take all of these items together as a package, it creates a much different downtown than we have right now. Right now, it's dark, it's slick, it's dangerous, and anything we can do to fix that is not just better for these businesses, but better for our community.
Thank you. I think your points will take, and particularly with the Harris teeter going across the street. I think there's a lot of excitement, or potentially can be a lot of excitement, and really get this area to be, to be on the move. So, I think it's a very timely discussion we're having now. Why don't we turn it over to council and see if council has any questions or comments for you? Mr. Bruegge?
Thank you very much, and thanks to the chamber, and especially our chamber leadership that's here. So, I think I was one of the, one of the folks that was sort of looking for bigger impact projects, but I think what I take away from this is, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that hasn't been done. And I think part of the discussion, and again, my views about sort of using one-time money, that it shouldn't really be used for maintenance, so I'm going to stick to that. But I have asked the city manager and city staff that we do need to take care of those maintenance issues, especially the ones that have, that have been raised on the operating budget side, because that's where they belong. So, I just want the chamber and the business community to know that I fully support those maintenance items being included in this year's budget and in future budgets, and that we should actually put them on a rotation, as Barbara mentioned, to get them done. And if they're not meeting sort of a life expectancy, if it's something shorter, we should definitely factor that in. But when I hear about sort of repair to concrete sidewalks, weeding and pressure washing, come on, those are things that we should be doing. And I think that we need to start doing those on the operating budget side, not waiting to sell off a major asset to meet those operating needs. I'm just, I fundamentally disagree with that approach. And just because we have the money now, I don't want to utilize it for those purposes. But I do want to have those built in the budget, so that's what I'll be looking for. So, I want to sort of now move to the, more the, the, you know, more of what I think the money should be used for, and that's infrastructure building. And I put in that bucket, you know, it sounds like the, the lights have become sort of a good feedback point. So, I think that, that's very helpful, along with some of the other, the other items that we're hearing about. The, the one thing I don't want to lose focus on, and I would just ask for the chamber's feedback on that at a future point, I do think at some point soon, we need to really start about, thinking about that little pocket park or whatever it is that we're considering. So, I'd still be very interested in finding out if the city were really to put some skin in the game, and that could be outside of this $500,000 or whatever it is that the number turns out to be. If the city were to do that, what would the chambers' thinking be? And would the property owners adjacent to it be willing to help advance some of our efforts in that corridor along the lines that were articulated in the small area plan? So, I'd be really interested, and again, getting that feedback. And again, that doesn't necessarily need to be part of this discussion or part of this use of the money, but that's, that's something that we have an opportunity to do. There's going to be some synergy that happens in the next few years there. Before pushing it too far, I'd really be interested in hearing the chambers' feedback on that, and hearing the, the property owners' feedback on that. And I understand one aspect of it is don't lose the access to parking in the back, so I can get that piece.
That's what I was going to respond to mostly was, you know, the park, everybody recognizes that that park needs to be refreshed, okay? Basically, there's brick walls that kind of just darken it and make it not accessible to the other side. But there was a real concern about the loss of parking, and that, you know, there's, you know, pretty pitiful parking in that particular area right now. And so that was a concern. The other thing I wanted to mention was, I think the, the business community kind of in that area were, expressed that if they could get the outside water access and the electric access, they would be more inclined to, you know, clean the street. The problem is, is they can't run a hose from a slop sink that's on the other, in the back of the building, through the building to clean the street and the sidewalk. So, they would be more apt to do it if we could provide them with the hose bibs and so forth on the exterior. Did you want to say something?
I did. Regarding the pocket park, not only, I think we agree, and I think the, the survey showed, people believe pretty strongly that there should be access to that public parking from Broad Street. And it's my understanding that the driveway right now is too narrow to allow any kind of public parking immediately, or a parking structure immediately behind there. So, that's an issue. I question spending too much money fixing up the park if, ideally, I think the park should actually be made smaller than it is now. So, it's something, we can do some more, we can look more into that, but it was not anything that people felt particularly excited about. They were more excited about, again, more obvious public parking that you can see from Broad Street, because that's really the only access point to our biggest area of public parking in the city.
Would you guess that there's been discussion in the chamber about this?
This is really helpful.
I think, long-term, that many in the chamber feel that it's, it might be almost inevitable that the, the surface parking that's there now becomes decked parking. If it becomes decked parking, we're going, we are going to need a lot of the area that's now consumed by park for egress, entrance and exit. And so, as Sally touched on, the more we spend right now on that park, the less likely it seems that we will be able to ever get a decked parking in there because, you know, the talk will be, well, you know, we've just, we just spent $2 million fixing up the park. I don't want to lose that. Parking, you know, for most of our members, parking is tant, is top of the list. So, any which way we can get that to happen, long-term, short-term, longer-term, I think that's the feeling there.
Tell us, to your question, Mr. Bruegge, Mr. Shields and I had lunch with one of the property owners last week, I believe it was last week, who was interested in putting up a mural. So, I mean, I think they're as interested in participating in the process. It's an ongoing discussion, and I think money's going to be an issue for some of these small business owners, even though they own property, they've been kind of a little cash strapped. But those conversations have been ongoing, and I think they've been going fairly well to date. Are there other comments from members of council, Mr. Z, maybe Mr. Duncan then?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really like this sense of priorities here, and I strongly support the installing electrification and exterior water access. I think that provides us with a capability that pay off lots of benefits that we haven't seen yet. And if we can get the, the owners and the tenants to pay some attention to that area directly in front of the stores, I think that's swatted. And of course, the payoff benefits when we do things like the Christmas tree lighting for this coming year. Beyond that, I'm wondering whether there have been discussion, well, I'm sure there was, what were the feelings on, on getting that mid-block crossing at the 100 block to accommodate future Harris teeter traffic?
Mid-block, you mean, on the, on West Broad Street?
Yes.
Yeah, 200 block.
Yeah, between the two stoplights. Was there some discussion about that?
No.
No, okay.
Quite honest, no. There was a lot of discussion about the, getting onto Park Avenue and the possibility of doing a median cut there, but as the, the feedback came through that that was a bad idea, and there dissolved all of the discussion of a crosswalk in that area. But honestly, there was not discussion. But that's a great idea.
Well, you know, my interest is, is to slow down the traffic, so some people actually see what's on either side instead of just using it as a cut-through. But, I'm sorry, was there?
I was just going to say, with the, with the median strip that's in front of Claire and Dawn's in the 100 block, you know, while people were concerned about removing that or even putting a left turn signal or left turn there, they were concerned about the safety, seriously concerned about the safety. seriously concerned about the safety of doing that. At the same time, with the Harris Teeter project comes the possibility, or not Harris Teeter project, but with the hit project coming, there comes the, the Robertson Building, there comes the very real possibility that the back access to Claire and Dawn's, Argeas, et cetera, through the Applebee's parking lot may be lost. So that may be something to table for the time being, as far as the median strip allowing the left turns.
You were speaking of the mid-block crossing by the CVS on Broad Street?
Yeah, between the CVS and, and Broad, right, and Washington.
You know, I think the thinking was that the, you know, the Harris Teeter project will have a end-of-the-block crossing right there by Doodle Hoppers, and, and on the other side as well.
Right.
So I didn't think people, you know, basically what the mid-block and the 100 block is basically going to help what I call the runners.
Yeah, no, I under-
The people running for the bus.
I understand. It's a, it's a very organic thing, and, and, you know, I'm sure we'll have, we'll have plenty of opportunity to see people running cross-traffic instead of crossing the crosswalk, and then, you know, the pressure will be there to do something with that. I just have a couple more other comments. The ESC has, and Tree Commission have done quite a lot of research into our planting beds, that little curb, and how that affects our ability to water them, and of course, my pet peeve is that eight inches from the one curb to the street, which is completely lost to everything. I don't know who's going to do that with, but I would urge, if we go forward with this, to, to have a conversation with the experts there, who have some really good suggestions on what to do with elevated curbs. And finally, brick sidewalks, I love the way they look. I walk a dog early in the morning, so I know all about slippery conditions, so does my dog. You know, I, I think that the places that I've found to, to be the least slippery are those where we have pavers that allow water to, to get between them, and they have some texture. So I think we look at permeable pavers that solves a couple issues at the same time. As long as Public Works continues to use calcium chloride instead of sodium chloride to tree your streets, I think they'll go a long ways to, to making sure that whatever we put down is also environmentally stable. We do use calcium chloride, do we not?
I'm not certain on, for, I'm not certain for, for sidewalks.
It'd be good if we did that, too. Thank you.
Before we go on to Mr. Duncan, Mr. Young, if you'd like to join us at the table, please, we'll find a space here in the corner for you, if you'd like, come on up. Mr. Duncan, you're next.
Thank you. I just wanted to start with a couple of particulars. One on the brick sidewalks, the survey does seem to have unearthed some intense feelings, and you do see some things posted in social media also, so I don't really have a position on this, I don't have a dog, and if I did, I'd get one with traction control, so he wouldn't slip. But it does seem like a pretty serious issue that some people are very concerned about. So I guess I would ask that, as part of all this process, maybe an offshoot would be a, a real concerted consideration of whether, you know, the current brick sidewalks that we use, or what we need, or if we could have, you know, brick lines with pavers in the middle, or something. But let's not miss the opportunity to try to respond to the public questions about brick sidewalks with, you know, real answers. Signage at the, I'm sorry that I'm so hoarse, and I got a cold over the weekend, obviously. Welcoming signage at city boundaries, I think's a nice idea. I would, I would love to see some signage right at the crossroads, you know, that makes it clear that while you're sitting there stopped in traffic, you're in the lovely city of Falls Church. I'm not sure there's anything there right now that says that. So that would be my, you know, one suggestion. Maybe even, you know, Barb's Love Statue, Love Sculpture.
Love Letters.
Love Sculpture, Love Letters Sculpture was such a wildly popular thing.
It was.
I mean, is there any reason that we couldn't do a, you know, a little City of Falls Church knockoff of that, that said, "City of Falls Church"?
Love a little city, yeah.
No, no, I want City of Falls Church, Barb, you know me. So people know they're in Falls Church. I mean, people who were, I was down in Williamsburg over the weekend, and somebody said from out in the, you know, hinterlands, well, I, it all looks the same up there, I can't tell one community from the other. I said, "Well, in Falls Church, we think we're very special." But we don't do a lot to sort of flag that, so, I don't know, that's some sort of, see, exactly. Speaking of trees, I'm glad you mentioned that, Joe. Yeah, thank you, thank you. The Tree Commission has weighed in with some thoughts to the Economic Development Committee about how to handle their concerns as part of the development proffer process. And it just occurs to me that I'm not sure that some of the things they've talked about are maybe not being addressed in, in these listed items that you have here. So I guess I would just ask for a connection to be made between your effort and their concerns, and I, I think maybe there's more agreement than perhaps might be perceived. And I'm not sure, I, I've not had a chance to study the proffers. Mr. Brueg would know better than I would about what's in there, about, you know, replenishing vegetation and so forth. I think that was the last particular point. Just broadly, I think it is important, as Mr. Brueg said, for us to wrestle with the concern that we not, you know, take the water sale money and, you know, not have anything very concrete to show for it down the road. And I think this council, under its leadership, has done a commendable job of basically segregating, you know, an enormous majority of the water sale money to things that either, like the pension fund are, you know, eternal, or, or as we go forward, monies will be allocated to, you know, large capital projects. I, I guess I do think that it's, it's acceptable, and in fact, even maybe desirable, to take a portion, a fairly modest portion, as you say, of the money, to make some of the improvements that you're making here. The fact of the matter is that we would have, had we not gotten embroiled in the water litigation over the years, we might well have had the money to have, you know, cured the rotation issue that we seem to have fallen into over the last few years. I mean, the, the amount of money that we're talking about spending on these improvements is about the equivalent of the money that was spent on legal fees in the water litigation in one year. So I consider this sum of money to be sort of a piece dividend, and I think it's legitimate to, I'm serious. I mean, you know, a lot of people did a lot of hard work to get that thing resolved, and, and I think that we deserve to kind of help ourselves out a little bit. But only because, I think, I mean, I wouldn't say this if, you know, you were like putting a crosswalk somewhere in some residential part of town. I do think it's very important to focus these efforts right here at the crossroads, and to try to put enough skin in the game to show that, as you said, Joe, the city shows care and concern, but not, not a, a, a piece more skin than is necessary, because the point is to show that concern, make that modest investment, and then hopefully leverage it big time. And I think there's every reason to expect, based on what we've just seen here in recent weeks, that, that, that is a realistic thing that we can hope for. I mean, you know, we might put the lights on the trees, and all of a sudden, we've got Todd Hit buying up, you know, one of the corners at the downtown, that's looked pretty good work. But I do think that this kind of investment will return value to us in a way that's permissible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Do you have anything, Vice Mayor Snyder?
I'll reserve my comments to others.
Okay, Mr. Brueg and Ms. Conley.
I just wanted to make two quick points. I mean, it, it does seem the bike racks and other bike issues have come up numerous times, and I think that's, that's really important. So I think that's something that we need to think about. Just as I do traveling, like others do, sort of bikes, sort of, bike infrastructure stands out in my mind, because I am also a cyclist. And I think it's a great way of also putting a signature to the city. And again, you know, I'm not going to expound on what that should be right now, but examples that I've seen in, say, beach communities in Southern California, one that I'm thinking of where the city did major improvements to a town that shall remain nameless, that was sort of, when I knew the area, was sort of a seedy beach community. The city apparently pumped in a lot of money, including a lot of things for, for bikes, and a creative thing that they did, and obviously, we wouldn't do this because it doesn't fit what our city's really about, but they created these surfboard-looking bike racks, totally usable, kind of works of art, that, that kind of gave the city a be-there feel, unlike other beach communities that kind of had different infrastructure for their bike racks, and it just, something I think that we can utilize, it's, especially since the city would be doing a lot of the work, whether it be proffers or new bike racks for existing locations. So I, so I hope that we can do some work on that, working with folks who probably have a lot of the creative juices, like Catch Another's, to come up with a way of, of sort of finding another way of branding the city with things like signage and also bike racks along those terms. And I, and I just kind of wanted to go back to a point that I was making earlier about the maintenance items. Again, I just want to be absolutely clear to the public and to the chamber that I support doing those items, and I think it's very unfortunate that we haven't been able to do some of them. I'd like to see them done in this budget. My only issue is how it's being funded. So I do want to see them funded, I think that they need to be funded out of the operating budget. I think that's where they belong now and moving forward. There's a couple ways of getting there. I mean, we are, we did put a lot of money into the pension fund, which should have some returns. We may get some of those this year, some moving into the future. That's another way of utilizing some of those savings that we've had to do that, but I just think we need to be disciplined in how we do it. So if it's coming from money that we would otherwise have to put into the pension system, and now we're freeing up X amount of dollars towards operating, fully support it, let's do it. And if it means doing other, you know, doing these projects rather than some other maintenance, I support that as well. I just have an issue when we talk about selling off assets and, and utilizing them for, for operating. I just think that other cities and other localities have gotten themselves into a lot of problems, and I think as we're going to the markets on some major capital projects we're doing, if we're known as a city that just utilized whatever small amount of water proceeds to pay for maintenance, it's a bad signal to send. And I think that we don't need to do that with the scale of project we're talking about. I think we can absorb these through the operating budget where they belong, and it still frees up the money to do more of the capital projects that I think the business community would like to see, rather than having it all absorbed by operating. So I just, that's a, you know, I don't normally say sharp, you know, sort of starting points, but that's, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be movable off that. So, and again, I want to just let the city manager know that one of my expectations is to see some of these items on the maintenance side being addressed in the operating. So I'm committed to doing it, or figuring out a way of doing it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Conley?
Thank you. Mr. Duncan was talking about skin in the game, and how much the city should be putting in, and I just want to mention that Colm Dillon is over there?
He was.
From Ireland's Four Peas, and he is really putting some skin in the game with his addition on the front of Four Peas. And Dogwood has put in money, and Claire and Dawn's is putting on a second-floor deck. So they're, they're not, okay. But so there are businesses out there that are putting some skin in the game, and what I'm wondering is, did you ask businesses, as you surveyed them, if the city did this, 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 and this, would they be more willing to improve their businesses? Because there's some that really aren't putting much in.
We didn't ask. Most of the businesses that did respond to this are the ones that are putting money back into it. The ones that are not involved in the community are the ones that we don't have regular communication with, they're the ones who we really need to talk to, about to see what they are willing to do.
But we, we have discussed that internally, and I, you know, if you stop and think about it, the, the few that I think you were thinking of are just that few. And by and large, most, most of the businesses, most of the retail businesses, most of those who have some visibility, really do take care of, of what's going on. And like so many things in life, we always remember the, the one scratchy thing, and I think that's what we're really remembering. And we can, we, the chamber, can help them see what it is that they're not seeing, you know, and, and help them remedy what it is that they can't figure out, because there's so few of them, really.
Yeah.
And there are some new property owners in that area that are, I'm sure, going to be very willing and helpful in that area.
So you think that this could almost be a tipping point of, if these basic things get done, make it a little nicer, then the business owners will be more likely to also...
And it's easier for the chamber to shake them up.
Right.
You know, now that we have all this other stuff going on, you really need to.
Well, and quite honestly, it's, you know, who wants to fix up the, their front door when their front pathway is cracked and broken and people are tripping on it? So, I think yes.
Mary Beth, excuse me, council. The one thing that I've found over the years is that when Watch Night comes around, they're all really excited, you know, because they know there's business that comes. And the people that are participating in Watch Night are the same people that are willing to help and, you know, do their windows and all that sort of thing. Because we, Becky and I worked together downtown, Becky Witzman, and one of the things that's always a big rub is, how come so-and-so doesn't fix up their window? How come so-and-so doesn't do this? And how comes, so it's been, you know, working with them, they're very amenable, you know, and they think Watch Night's like a Big Benny for them, but a lot of the businesses don't stay open because it can't be staffed. But I think they really appreciate and see things happening when they do happen, and we experienced that when Dan McKeever, when we did the banners and the pole planters. And that was something that they really appreciated, and people would come into our store, where Claire and Dawn's is now, and say, you know, "Who's doing the baskets? I just love this," and all that. So it's, it's something that people do notice, and I, it's like having any event at your home, you clean up everything, and it's a bunch of little stuff, but it all shows when it's all done together, so.
And I was also, sorry, just with the brick sidewalks, the fact that the question was asked at a time when brick sidewalks were troublesome, it jogged people's memories. And I'm just wondering if throughout the year, there are other things that may, if this, if this survey was done in August, we might get a whole other list of concerns that people have that they just forgot about because they're tripping on brick sidewalks. So it just might be something worthwhile to keep on, keep those lines of communication open between the city and businesses throughout the year.
Just to be clear, we did not ask anybody for their concerns.
[laughter]
We provided them, you know, with lists of things that could be done, and, and the concerns came out. But yes, at some point, I think there's a roundabout way we can ask them for that without asking exclusively for concerns.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot for this. As I've listened to the discussion, your set of, of recommendations as priority one really strike me as exactly the way to go. In, in, in an analytical sense, it seems to me there are three sort of clusters of issues that we want to address. The first is how to make it easier for people who live in Falls Church to get to the commercial areas, and that's, that's bike lanes, that's, that's sidewalks, that sort of thing. The second thing is how do you get people that are passing through here to stop here? And that's, and, and there are some overlapping things, like the lighting, I think overlaps those two. But I think that's when you get into the signage, like why, and I've been trying to do this for years, why can't we get uniform signs that tell people where the parking is? I don't think you even know where the parking is when you go up and down Broad Street in Washington, you still don't. A related issue to that is, and, and you were very diplomatic, the way you put it, we need structured parking in the downtown area. Again, something that's been talked about, somehow we need to get it, and because as I walk that sea of asphalt, you need it, because you don't have any options, and if you lose your parking, you're going to lose your business. I understand that. So my comment the other week about too much struck, too much surface parking, that, what I was really saying is, we need structured parking, and that would free up perhaps some of that area for more development and more of the kind of amenities that we're talking about. So, so the parking garage is a key element to getting people and serving people who don't live here to support our businesses. And then the third issue, which is more an aesthetic issue, which is the unique image, the, the, you know, something that separates this, that marks this, or a combination of things that mark the area as your, your... that mark the area as you're, you're in a location that has history, that has culture, that everything else. Whatever the image is that we want to project, we need to do that. So the way I sort of see it is in three areas. One, make it easier to get through our businesses for people to live here. Number two, make it easier to get through our businesses for people who don't live here, and where they can park especially. And that's largely, in my view, signage and parking, and transit. And then third is what I will say is the image. And these can all interact in various ways. I think to some extent, our small area plan tried to get at some of these issues. But what I don't see here is, like, where do we really want to go at the end? Like, I think you've done a very good job of dealing with a constrained set of resources. And actually, what you're proposing here might serve multiple objectives, as I've laid them out. So, well, very well done. I think we ought to get moving on these. But I would also like a more systematic approach, so that we've got a list of things that we're going to start knocking them off. Okay, we're going to do these this year, parking garage by such and such a date, whatever. And then just move forward in that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any reaction to that at all? I mean, does it make sense? Does it sound like it's the right ballpark?
I don't know that that's, would you be asking us to actually put that together?
No, no, no. I was just asking your reaction. Is it worthwhile to sort of pursue this kind of thing?
Yeah. And I do think that the unique image piece is important, but it's not something, we really tried to focus on things that could be done quickly, and in this, with this amount of money.
And I think a lot of it has to do with the introduction of the small area plan for the downtown area, which would be more of that type of thing. You know, basically, we were kind of tasked with looking at this, and, you know, basically, this dovetails beautifully into the small area plan, and even can be used to sort of prioritize certain aspects of it. So that's, you know, I see that as being our future. And this is kind of the first baby step.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
I just had a sort of a really quick question. We've been really focused on this money that we have to do some small incremental improvements and investments. So what's the sexy thing, other than a parking structure, that we could do if we had more money?
Ooh, that's a nice question.
Other than a parking structure?
I think it would take a little bit of time, too, but I think public art is huge.
Yeah, I do. Especially with the water.
That goes back to Dave.
You could do some bounds.
Some way of identifying, it's not, it's not going to be a single thing. More like...
Goopings.
Sorry. It's not going to be a single thing, like a parking, even a parking garage is not sexy. But if there were a way to identify Falls Church, to make Falls Church as, who was saying, they were driving, somebody was saying they were in Williamsburg, and somebody there was saying, I never go up there because they all look the same. If there's, there is a way to mark Falls Church as a unique small town, you know, whether that's, and I think that it's probably with public art, and it's probably with public art, that is themed, if you will, sort of the same way that, you know, occasionally you'll see cities do fundraising with donkeys and elephants, as DC did a few years ago, or other things like that. But there is a way to identify and mark Falls Church as here. You're in someplace special. Right, exactly. And I don't think that has to be a great big thing. I don't think that has to be very expensive. It's a, you know, it's a combination of those markers, maybe it's a combination of flowered baskets everywhere. I mean, those things that you just don't see anywhere else.
Thank you. Well, I'll tell you, why don't we sort of wrap up this part of the discussion? I think we're on the road, though, to creating a stronger, more vibrant, more pedestrian-friendly downtown, and creating a vision, a stronger vision for a downtown and a great sense of place. I think there's a lot of things that are coming together, I hope, in the near future to achieve those goals. Before we move on to the next part of this, which is just general comments you might have, kind of a quick summary of things that weren't discussed with this downtown area, but you have nonetheless. Mr. Shields, is there anything you want to add to this discussion? I know you've had some involvement with putting together this list and some ongoing discussions. Is there anything you might want to add at this point?
One thing I just would say, that our approach to this has been to use the one-time money, the water sale proceeds, for things that will last. And then take the comments about maintenance, and then figure out what we're going to do with those operationally. And so I did want to address that.
Thank you. Why don't we now wrap up, though, with some overall comments you might have, if you have any, in fact, that weren't addressed previously? You know, I wouldn't call them gripes, but things that the business community thinks could be done to improve commerce, business, bring more visitors, customers into the city, are the things that haven't been addressed tonight? Mr. Young, I know you've got your hand up. Is there something you'd like to say? Come on up to the table and grab a microphone.
I've had discussions with a number of people about the Harris Teeter project. And one of the points, Jim and I have talked about it many times, one of the points is, this ought to be a real anchor for that part of town. I want to make a plea, once again, most of you probably heard this before, it's not an anchor if you can't get across the street. It's not an anchor. That then dovetails into the second related plea I want to make, which is pedestrians. Again, you've all heard me talk about La Jolla and what they did there. Blinking lights raised, slightly raised, pedestrian crosswalks, make it safe for people to get across the street. We can distinguish, I completely agree about the public art. I think that's a terrific way to distinguish us. I also think flowers ought to be a major distinguishing mark. But pedestrian-friendly, in the most obvious blinky, blinky, blinky way, is also a way to distinguish us, but then also to address what Dave was talking about earlier, how do we get people to stop and notice what's there? Make them stop. Make them stop for people walking across the street.
Thank you. Are there other comments from your side of the table, from the chamber, about things that haven't been addressed? I know in the past, it's been issued with tree, canopy, things like that, but are there other things that we haven't heard from tonight that you would like us to be aware of and try to solve?
Well, in this, in this thing, we were basically concentrating on the crossroads area. One of the comments we got was the connectability to the other segments where we're seeing growth in our commercial developments. So basically, if you're going west on Broad, you have the downtown, and then you kind of have a jump to where you get to the Mad Fox, Spectrum, Panera area, and then you have another little jump to hopefully where we have a Mason Row thing going on, and then another jump. It's going to be the connectivity of those things that is going to make the whole city grow. And it's same with going down to the Reserve and Pearson Square and Pizzeria Orzo, and as we keep building things that way. And now, of course, we're headed east a little bit to on Broad Street. So, you know, these connectivity is going to be a key. And I know, you know, the area plans show a lot of that. And that's going to be a key, is just to get the other sections of town connected to the crossroads area.
Thank you. Other comments? Barb?
I know that people are working on the trail for signage, you know, more signage on the trail, and more things that advertise, you know, what we're doing, you know, whether it's an event or whatever, so that people will come into Cherry Hill Park. And I think that there's, you know, there's no signs for Cherry Hill Park till you get to Cherry Hill Park, right across from the library. And that's something we run into with a lot of the festivals and that sort of thing. So there's a lot of small details that are huge if you're coming to town for the first time, because where's Cherry Hill Park? And I know that most people look it up on their cell phones, but it's a little ambiguous as to where that exactly is. So parking for Cherry Hill Park, or whatever, I think those are the things that we want to do, maybe use with the banners for, that we have, that we're using for Catch, the Catch event banners, which have been successful. So I think there's options that help color up and draw peoples where they notice it. And I also wanted to comment, too, is that a lot of that greasy film that's on the walks, that especially on the brick walks down in the 100 block on the brown side, the north side, is from a lot of particulate matter that's never been power washed off. They've been there, what, 20 years, the brick sidewalks? And I know when we did the 125 building on North Washington, it was easily 1986. So that's 20, almost 30 years. So that's something that, you know, it accumulates, and a lot of those trees are pretty dense, and the moisture's there, and it just gets moldy and it gets slippery. So power washing it with just a little bit of surfactant really gets it really nice and clean, and it's not so slippery. So that's another argument for having the water availability, excuse me, availability.
Thank you.
One, it's not sexy, B-pole taxes, the taxes for professional fees, we're out of whack, and it hurts, it hurts bringing businesses in. You know, increasingly, Falls Church serves mostly smaller businesses. You know, the Intelsats are going to be in Tyson's, where you've got floor plates of billions of square feet. It's not a market that we're going to be able to capture in our lifetimes. What we can capture, and what we have been successful in capturing, are the smaller businesses and professional fees. And they're very sensitive to prices, and they're very, and because they're one or two-person shops many times, they, you know, they know that the fees here are higher than they are just on the other side of the line. What, so why are they, why do they come here? It might be closer to their home for any number of other reasons, but they don't like it. And I think they're, for all those who do come and set up shop here, there are probably just as many who don't.
Okay.
But just to add on that, that it's the professional services category within the B-pole taxes that are, I think, and I could be wrong, I think it's 16 cents higher per dollar than either Arlington or Fairfax. So it's just that, it's really that one category within the B-poles that's so high. The other thing, I wanted just to mention again, we've already talked about it a little bit, but the permitting processes, we hear about all the time, about the time it takes, and quite honestly, about some of the customer service among lower to mid-management. So the customer service piece that was in here but we never talked about is important, I think. And then I just wanted to say, Kate and Mike Collins actually have been terrific to work with. It's been really nice to know that we've been heard with all of our issues, and that they actually have been willing to actually do something about them, like lighting the trees, or trimming the trees, or whatever it takes. So thank you to them, and to Wyatt. And thank you for having us here.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you all coming out tonight. Maybe with that's a good segue to wind up our discussion tonight, but we hope it's an ongoing discussion, and one that'll repeat itself at a minimum on an annual basis, but hopefully more frequently than that. But we certainly, I think, as a council as a whole, want to engage the business community and make sure your voice is heard, and you can help us create the most vibrant business and downtown community that we can have. But again, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Could I close out just for a second? As the chamber's, as the council's liaison of the chamber, I just want to say it's extremely refreshing to be able to sit here across the table and talk about some of the things that have come up in, you know, a number of board meetings over the years. And, you know, there are some concerns that we need to get out there and talk about, and I think this is a very constructive environment in which to do it. The chamber itself is always punched far above its weight, and it's especially doing that now. We're getting a lot of great work out of the chamber, so I just want to thank all you all for your work. And also, I want to, I want to thank the mayor, because I think it's his vision several months, if not a year ago, that got all this started, and brings us here tonight to talk about making some prudent investments that we are going to do thoughtfully and carefully, and I think will yield additional tax revenues that anybody looking at our books down the road will say, well, that was a, that was a smart civic move that they made to invest in their downtown in a way that creates new wealth where that might not exist now. So I just want to thank the mayor.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
On the last note, the chamber's gala date is March 21st. So, and your invitations will be coming soon.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, why don't we go ahead and get started and keep on truckin' here with the idea of getting out before 10:30? That is the plan. So why don't we go ahead and keep going? Thank you all for sticking around. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Shields, why don't we go on to the next item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so we just have two items left on the agenda this, the compensation study and the second quarter financial results. And both of them do have a bearing on the FY16 budget, which we're working to develop right now, and we'll give council recommendations on on March 8th. The compensation study, Richard's going to introduce it, and also introduce our consultant. But in terms of the impact on FY16 to implement the recommended changes for those who are below what the market rates are in their classification plans, the cost to that is about $60,000, in terms of an impact in FY16 for a full year. And so we want to talk with the council about what the study told us, and talk about implementation. We haven't done this for 15 years, so it's important to do. And I think one of the things that Richard and Don will talk about is that we don't have major adjustments to make. And sometimes when localities do this, they do find that there are major things where things have drifted over time. And so I think one of the good pieces of good news is that, is that the city has kept its classifications ranges within what the market is in Northern Virginia. Richard?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We started about a year ago working on the, a full review of the city's compensation and classification system. The last time this was done completely was 1998. Since that time, Human Resources has done some classification reviews, some adjustments in the pay plan and classification system. But it is important every once in a while to have a full study done of all the positions to make sure that we are competitive with other jurisdictions, as well as internal equity within the city's system itself. So we, we were looking around for a consultant to hire. We wound up using, hiring a management advisory group. They specialize in doing public sector plans for governments, as well as for schools. They've done a number of studies in the state of Virginia, including Vienna, which was the contract that we wrote, that done some work for Prince William County, Hampton, Norfolk, Petersburg. Been doing the council of governments for the last five years or more. So, the last spring, we began this process, and we involved the employees by having them fill out job questionnaires, which were pretty extensive, that tell all about their jobs, providing all kinds of data to MACS so that they could do a complete study of all the city positions. As Wyatt was saying, the overall message, really, I think, from the city's standpoint is a, is a positive one, or certainly from a budgetary standpoint, is that the findings of this study that Don Long will go over in just a few minutes, is that overall, the city salaries are competitive with the surrounding jurisdictions. So there's not a lot of adjustments that are necessary. We are bringing the employees who will be below the minimum of the new plan up to the minimum. And then for our police officers, they have been under a grade step plan. We implemented one back in 2007, and that was right about the time, just before, about a year before, we went off the cliff there with the huge recession. So salaries were frozen for three years. When that plan was implemented in 2007, there were steps of 5% intervals. That's not practical in today's society. We're not going to be seeing 5% raises. So, so that combined with the fact that we had some salary increases that were of even dollar amounts, not a percentage, to help the lower-paid employees after the three-year salary freeze, it really meant that all the police officers... salary freeze. It really meant that all the police officers, with the exception of the very new ones, were not really on an actual step of the old police plan. So one of the things we wanted to do in this study is make sure we are competitive, but also to get all the police officers, and these are officers at the rank of sergeant and below that are on the police pension plan. The police officers above that rank are on the other plan, which we call the unified plan for all other employees. But to get the police officers back on an actual step. So there are some costs involved of that 60, $64,000 to do that, but we believe that that will be a good thing, that in addition to being competitive, we think it'll be positive for morale and just good practice. Everybody should be on a step when you have the steps. For our other plan, the unified plan that Don will be going over, we do not have steps in that. We just have ranges for each, each position. So with that, let me turn it over to Don Long from MAG and he'll go over an overview of the, of the findings of this study.
Thanks. Thank you. Is this the, how do we go from one to the other?
So the clicker on the right will advance the slide.
Right here? Okay. Good evening and thank you for your invitation to talk to you tonight. A lot of the thunder has been stolen here and that's fine. They're absolutely right that what we discovered through our study is that the city has retained a pretty competitive position in the general market and that's a good thing. I've had the pleasure of working with many communities across the country. We've done over 500 studies over, you know, 25-plus years and some agencies are not in such a good position as you find yourselves here. And then it becomes a challenge as far as implementation is concerned. But I can tell you, we have worked with WashCog for the last eight years, actually, pretty much annually, and doing surveys of municipalities in the area and discovered that in 2009, 10, 11, it slowed very much so to a crawl in terms of any adjustments to pay plans and actual salaries. And in the last year or so, we've seen more activity and more movement in the market. But the city has during this whole time, since you've had your last study as a matter of fact, maintained a good position. We have made some recommendations for a new pay structure that recommends as well some re-titling of some positions because work changes over time and we want to recognize that. We've made some adjustments to the levels of where the positions fall in both directions and then some remaining the same. And so your implementation is actually very, very limited. So I'm going to go, I hope, if I can change this, there. This is just a real quick picture of the whole process. We've had the opportunity to meet with employees and department heads. We trained them in how to complete the online questionnaires. And everybody did so and they did a great job. It's very complex. It's 25 pages long and we got current job information from each employee. And I have to say, they did a great job. They were very dedicated to it. So you have very current information in terms of the actual job duties that are being completed by employees within the city's structure. So that was the job analysis questionnaire process. And then we reviewed all of that information individually, each job, each person completing the questionnaire, in, in great level of detail. In addition, we conducted a market salary survey and reviewed that information. I'll show you the list of the communities that we surveyed that was included within the, the survey. You'd like to look in the mirror and see your own structure and the, and the same number of employees and an exact mirror image of yourself, but that is not a perfect word out there in surveyland. So we looked at communities that were in the general area here, and I'll show you which ones those are. But we got good information and showed that you were pretty competitive at your minimums and your midpoint and a little bit behind on your maximums. I'll describe that for you as we go. The overall picture that I'd like you to see here is that of the balance between the, what we call internal equity and external equity. Internal equity is how the positions relate to one another within the city's structure. A job with more responsibility is clearly going to have, be in a higher level within the pay structure than one that has less responsibility. So we want to make sure we get that right. And balanced against what we call external equity, you want to be in a competitive position to your general market. So what we did is developed salary schedules and performed some cost calculations with the software that we've developed over the years and produced reports for the city's consideration. So in terms of the scope of work, it included these orientation sessions that I described, the questionnaires, interviews, job analysis, the survey. We developed the classification structure and the pay plan and recommended various changes that included some titling changes and the levels for the positions within the structure. In terms of your survey, you lagged the market very minimally at the minimum. Under a 5% variation is not particularly meaningful. So you're right on target in both the minimum levels and the midpoint. At the maximum, you're a little bit behind. And I'll describe for you how we handled that in just a minute. But in the survey, there were 42 of the positions, what we call benchmark positions, positions that we find out there in the market. For example, custodian, office manager, human resources director, positions that are common out there in the market. And those are the types of positions that we surveyed. So the survey included these communities that are in the Northern Virginia area. We've had the pleasure of working with several of these, so we know their structures pretty well. Again, some of the agencies are a little bit larger, some a little bit smaller, but we found really good information in the market and found you to be competitive for most of your positions and overall competitive at the minimum and slightly behind on the maximum. We found that the market average range width, which is between the minimum and the maximum of the ranges, most agencies have structures, pay structures, pay ranges established for their positions. And the average range width was 69%. Now, yours is smaller than that. And what we try to do as much as possible in our surveys is try to cause your structure recommended to be relatively consistent with what we find in the market, but not with, we don't want to make too dramatic change. So we moved the range slightly to a 65% level, which makes you competitive. And by doing that larger range, by creating the larger range, it accommodates the lagging in the market that we found at the maximum for your positions. So that's how we accommodated that. There is, in the pay structure, 5% between each grade. And we realigned the jobs to make sure that there, that we achieve that internal equity and the external competitiveness as well. So this should make your entry levels competitive. Where you have highly skilled people that you're looking at and trying to hire, it's always desirable to have some flexibility in the hiring process. So you may want to hire above the, the minimum level. That's a common best practice. But the ranges generally are in line with your market at this time, with the recommendations. Again, I mentioned there were 42 benchmarks that represented various job families within your structure. And it is set such that it will be competitive at this time. Okay? We use a 30-year plan as a default, as a basis for doing calculations. The city is using a, what we call a minimum implementation plan. In other words, let's bring everybody to the minimums, make sure everybody's within the, the pay ranges for each of their positions. And as well, putting people, putting the police positions, the captain and sergeant, no, sergeant, corporal, and police positions on a step within the step plan. We also applied a 1.5% structure adjustment, which we can, we do this with our software. We decided that, well, since the survey was, gosh, back in the summer.
In May, yeah.
So, yeah. We took a look at the various cost of living indices and applied a 1.5%, 1.5% structure adjustment for this year. So you should be good for this upcoming year with that adjustment. The target date is actually this February, I think, next week is the way I have it calculated. Of the 200 or so employees covered in the study, 16 employees are below the minimum that I mentioned. So they would be brought at, to that minimum level to make sure they are within the range for their assigned grade, for their position. And then to put the police officers, whether they be sergeant or corporal or police officers, on the step plan, 17 people would be affected there. For employees that may be above the maximum, they are typically, and that's best practice out there, and that's typically the policy that nearly all agencies employ, is that their salary would be frozen until such time as their maximum, such time as their salary, such time as the maximum of the grade exceeds their salary.
How many employees fit that category?
Hmm, not, I don't know. Couple?
It was just a handful. I think it was like three that were over, would have been over the new range, yes.
Three?
Yes.
Yeah. So in terms of the actual costs, the adjustment to minimum, these are annualized numbers, annualized figures. So for the balance of this fiscal year, it would be
About 25,000.
Some portion of that, yeah, right. So these are annualized figures, the cost to minimums to bring those 16 people to the minimum, annualized is $44,800. To bring the police positions to, to put them on a step plan is $19,912 annualized, for a total of $64,712, 33 people. And your change in total payroll for all those people included within this project was, is 0.48%. So I've had the challenge of working with some communities that have had much larger needs in terms of being competitive. And so you're in a good position. I think that's the good news here. And you've had some minor adjustments to the pay structure. You're competitive with the market. I think your hiring rates are going to be competitive and you should be good for a year.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Are there comments or questions from council about this report or just in general? Mr. Baruch?
So I know that we're, it sounds like we're taking a snapshot and saying the total adjustment cost this year for the upcoming, upcoming budget would be about 64, or if you round up, 65,000. Have we looked at what it means moving forward based on our five-year or three-year that we've been trying to push towards, multi-year budgeting? And again, if it hasn't, I'm not ready to comment on this because, I mean, it's easy to take a look at it in one shot. But if we're not looking at it over multiple years and we know personnel costs and human capital is very important, but without sort of getting a sense of what it means, projecting it out a number of years, which we should be able to do because there should be somewhat of fixed costs, I think we're missing a big piece before 64,000, 65,000. It may not seem like a lot, but, but if all of a sudden we're realizing in the out years it's significant, along with everything else we're trying to accomplish, I'd
Well, that would just, that would become the, the new base. So you would be adding 64,000 to the base of the FY16 budget.
Not necessarily. I mean, I mean, it depends on how you guys are setting up the movement within steps for the police force, what the new plan looks like. And I, I don't necessarily want to dive into that level of discussion, but I don't think it's easy as plugging in the base and saying you can base it out because you're creating a new plan from what I understand. Right? I mean, there is a new compensation plan. What I haven't heard is how do you move through whatever that plan is, both on the police side and on the city's side, and at what rate you move through. So I've, I heard you, Richard, earlier say at least in the police plan, it was envisioned you move a step 5% every year. So I, I just, and again, I have no interest in diving into that level of detail. That's up to the city manager to figure out that plan. But at the end of the day, we're going to be responsible on the council side of figuring out what, what the budget impacts are. So I need to know, I get what the budget impact is for this year, but I need to know what the budget impact is moving forward if we adopt this plan. And again, you know, how that plan internally is managed is like not in what I view as the council domain or my domain. I mean, I leave that to the experts to design the plan. I can tell you if I think we can afford it or not moving forward. So I just need to
All right, well, yes, sir. Okay. Well, I hear what you're saying. So the, the base would go up this year and then the, for the police plan, under the, the new plan, it would be 3% intervals. So, and then the other plan, the unified plan for everyone else is an open range plan. So it really would depend on the amount of money that's appropriated for salary increases each year, just like it currently is.
And you use performance as well.
All right. So it'd still be
I'd say maybe we don't get an answer tonight on this question, but I think that is irrelevant. If we're going to create different steps or different increases between steps and we're re-managing the bubble of pay, I think the question is really a $64,000 question, literally. But I think, I think that it
Getting late.
I think it does deserve an answer and maybe a little more thought. So maybe at our next discussion, as we can try to run out the numbers a couple more years and see if there's some more insight available. Other comments, questions? Ms. Oliver?
Mr. Parker, for the 16 employees that we need to bump up, were there any common factors that might have contributed to them falling in that, in that below-average category?
I think a fair, a fair number of those 16 were, were new police officers because the study is that the starting range for our police officers would be higher than what it currently is. So we just hired four officers who just completed the academy in December. And we had, I would say probably seven or eight of those employees were, were new police officers. For the other employees
They're typically relatively new people.
They were relatively new. Some of them were, were minor adjustments. The librarian classification, as I recall, went up. So we had a new employee who had just become a librarian. So they got a, an increase under that category. Couple of maintenance positions that were fairly new received that. So the police was probably the primary one.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I'm struck by your peer and competitors listing the broad range of the jurisdictions. So I just need to understand, I mean, it's not like it's jurisdictions our size or cities or counties or even, you know, in the Commonwealth as opposed to Maryland. No, I guess they're all in Virginia. So, you know, does this mean to say that if, if I'm a professional white-collar, you know, person working for the city of Falls Church that based on your findings, you know, within your range of tolerance there, I'm likely doing okay here compared to how I would do if I jump shipped Alexandria or Fairfax County? I mean, is that what it means really on the ground?
Well, it means on the ground that most of your positions are competitive with most of the positions in those other communities. Some of the larger agencies will have higher, upper management salary levels because they're managing larger organizations. So that's something we had to, you have to keep one eye on that and consider that, you know, and because size matters. And, but for the positions at the entry level and up through the middle of the structure, you know, you have to be competitive with those, no matter whether they're, you know, Fairfax County or whether they're Manassas Park.
Yeah, I agree with that. No, I think it's very important for people to, you know, understand that it's just important for us to have an awesome transportation planner as it is, to have a awesome, you know, teacher or whatever. I mean, the community is strengthened by proper compensation for both of us. I'm just interested that, you know, we, on the city's side, we're comparing ourselves to such a broad range of jurisdictions whereas sometimes in some other context And sometimes, in some other contexts, we think, oh, well, we have to compete with Fairfax, or we have to compete with Arlington. But you're saying that, at least on the city side, we're competitive broadly.
Broadly. And, you know, we have to think geographically as well. I mean, we think in terms of within an hour's drive typically, when traffic is good, I should say, yeah, uh, that a person would be willing to commute to nearly all those, I believe.
And by having a large range, I mean, there are some jurisdictions that have positions that parallel ours quite, quite nicely. So you're able to pick on that, use those for the comparison. So, uh, uh, but this is really the, yeah, these are the, the jurisdictions that, uh, where our employees typically would have options to go elsewhere, but.
And finally, if I could, you, you should be good for this coming year with that adjustment. Understand the caveats that Mr. Baruk brought up. But when you say you should be good for this coming year if we make that sixty-four thousand dollar adjustment, do you mean that, that that would be sufficient to keep us in the bands that you've identified for the, uh, coming fiscal year?
Yes.
Without any further additional compensation? In other words, additional compensation would, would just improve our position, I guess.
That's true. You're, we place you at the, the average of the market, you know, not the highest, not the lowest. We take the survey information and wrap it around the job analysis and put you in a, what we call a competitive position. That's in effect, it is at the average of what we found in the market. Now, I can automatically make your structure higher very easily, but that would probably cost more.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But I, I can say that you will be competitive for the next, this next fiscal year in terms of the ranges, you know? And your actual salaries is a function of, uh, your, any adjustments that you make, if you make any, any across-the-board or any kind of performance adjustments.
Okay.
But most of the salaries would be within those ranges, and those ranges are going to be competitive.
Okay. Manager, it looks like you want to say something. Let me just ask one other question. I don't live in the land of, of steps. So, uh, if we have a certain category of employees, whatever they are, police or whatever, that get a step increase of picking number three, and others don't have that kind of structure, is it, is it the case that if, you know, the council decides in any given year, you know, salaries are going to be one percent or whatever the number is, flat, then the people who are on the step plan automatically get three percent? And others don't? I mean, is that, is that?
I think the decision at that point is you'd either have to give the police officers three percent, or you would not, they would not receive a step increase, and you would just adjust the range by one percent that year. In which case, the police officers would receive one percent, just like all the other employees.
Okay, so council retains the latitude to step away from the step if conditions somehow warranted, according to that council.
That's correct.
At the risk, of course, of getting us out of, out of band, but, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, other comments, questions?
Could, could I just make one observation?
Sure.
The, um, in terms of the recommendations that I will come to the council with, I will be mindful of what the jurisdictions are doing for compensation in their proposed budgets to maintain competitiveness. And, um, and so that will be part of the discussion for budget time, along with presenting a budget that meets the council's, uh, budget guidance. And, uh, so we're working very hard on the numbers to try to, um, to make it all work. Uh, and we don't know yet what the other jurisdictions are planning to do on compensation. And so there's, uh, a couple of things that need to come together over the coming weeks.
Okay, why don't we try to wrap this discussion up pretty soon here? Um, did you have a comment, Ms. Oliver? And don't, don't let me stop you from saying something you wanted to say. Uh, Ms. Conley?
Did you propose that the other employees that are not on a step plan go onto a step plan? Did I hear you say that at the beginning?
I'm sorry, say again?
The, the employees that are not on the step.
Mm-hmm.
Is part of this proposal that we build a step plan for them?
No.
I just imagined that? Okay.
No, they would be, the, the police would have a step plan, and other employees, general employees, would have an open range. So they would be between the minimum and the maximum.
And then as, if there is a one percent increase in salaries, and that range increases as well? Or just, do you, do you ever max out in an open range where you get to the top of?
Well, it's a function of how you, uh, your policies. I can tell you what a lot of communities do. When a, and across-the-board is given, oftentimes, the entire structure is adjusted upward in recognition of cost of living, if you will. Um, and then movement through those ranges are often completed through performance evaluation, performance adjustments. And so, I mean, I, you've done some combination of that over the years, I guess.
But there is a max on to each range. So yes, an employee can reach the maximum of a range.
Okay. So I've got just a couple real quick questions. I'm going to get you out of here shortly. The sixty-five grand that we just talked about, or sixty-four grand, does that include pension contributions as well, or is that just flat salary?
That is salary.
So there'll be additional pension contributions as well, whether or not?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, your study didn't include benefits, or is it just flat salary?
It was focused on salary.
So benefits are a wild card that we don't really know the answer to, whether someone else's pension plan was better, ours was better, their health insurance was better, the vacation time, all the other things that go into the thirty percent of your compensation, that might be benefits. We really didn't do the study of that?
Wasn't included within the scope.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I just wanted to kind of get our eyes, or our arms around what we did, didn't do. Um, I guess you didn't do a pay scale on city councils, did you? No, okay. Um, and so just to conclude.
That wasn't part of the study, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Well, just to conclude, it sounds like we are in the mid-range. We are not the top of the pay scale for city employees. We are not at the bottom, but we're basically in the middle. And that's pretty good to be in the middle. That means we're competitive with other places. That kind of the bottom line of this?
That's generally where we try to place an agency in the absence of any other direction.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you hanging out and waiting for this to come up.
Sure.
Uh, one last real quick question.
And, and I'm glad you raised it, Dave. Is there a reason why we didn't include benefits, especially given the tremendous work that the community has done? And by community, I mean the council, citizens, and staff on benefits, that being the pension, which most people in the private sector don't have? Is there a reason why that wasn't included? I mean, it's such a, you know, for lack of a better word, a, a huge benefit to our employees, and hopefully makes us pretty competitive. Is there a reason why the benefits weren't considered in the scope? And I understand that they weren't, so.
It becomes very, uh, it's a difficult process to, to have a complete salary and class, uh, benefit structure review. I know, uh.
Well, I don't want to, I mean, it should be pretty easy to find out roughly what employees contribute in various jurisdictions to their pension system. Can we at least find that out?
Yes, we, we did do that a few years ago when we went through that. So that has been done. We have done comparisons as to what employees pay in pension plans, what they pay for health insurance, uh, and, and the other things. So we can do that again, but that was done, that was part of the reason why we increased the employee contributions, uh, to the pension plan. Uh, made some changes on what the employee compensation is to the health insurance on that. And, and we also, uh, work with our schools as far as a lot of the benefits.
Let me just cut to the chase. So when we get to budget time, and we're going to be talking about changing our compensation system, these are the questions that are going to come up about where we're at, and are we still competitive with other jurisdictions about how much employees are contributing to the other, um, benefits that, that they're receiving, like pensions, life insurance, health insurance, et cetera. So, because I do think that we need to look at it holistically. I think that we've already sort of done this piece, but, um, I'm certainly going to be asking those questions as we move forward on this budget.
Okay.
Where, where the rest of it is.
All right, well, see.
Just so there's no surprises.
So you've got some direction. Uh, hopefully, you all can maybe put a little thought into that as we go through this process. But we appreciate what you've done. It sounds like a very thorough analysis of compensation, base compensation. And we appreciate your time and all your efforts. Thank you all as well for coming out. Why don't you move on to the next item?
Thank you, Don. So we have the second quarter financial report. And Richard LaCondre will deliver it. It was in your packets. So read ahead, and we had a discussion on it with the Budget and Finance Committee at the, at its meeting last week.
Happy Monday, council. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That's good. That's brief, to the point. Um, I imagine there may be a question or two. Questions?
Just, just one. I note that our state revenues are down pretty near six hundred thousand dollars, which is two cents on the tax rate. What does that come from?
Well, one, um, one factor was, we were required by, uh, DPRT in the past to report, uh, one point two million dollars of revenue that was a pass-through to NVTA.
Right.
Now it's going direct. So, that's part of the reason for the drop.
But there is, there are. There are other drops. I mean, the, the problem of local aid to the Commonwealth, you know, we've had to give money back to the Commonwealth this year, and we're watching the budget process this year.
Can we calculate the amount of money? I think it's important for people to know that. This whole state locality relationship needs more daylight, if you will, on it. So that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I know the hour's late, but I think it might be helpful for folks who did not get to attend the EDC meeting, just for Mr. LaCondre to, sorry, Budget Finance Meeting, to just give a kind of overview at least of the, of key revenue indicators that you call out when you show this chart to us, that you've mentioned.
Yes, I can. All right. Yeah, the key indicators are, um, between personal property taxes and other taxes. Those, those are the key ones for us. The first one, as you know, is personal property, because, um, the first quarter of our budget year is when we send out the bills for personal property. Personal property, um, dropped four point three percent below what we budgeted. It is down almost two percent year over year. Um, what accounts for that? Well, I would think that part of it is that the, the car buying and the, uh, car leasing season is over. People have already, um, made their expenditures for that. And that has just slowed down. All right? In the past, we've been growing at anywhere between four to seven percent a year. Um, it's over. Um, the next two items are your, um, sales tax and meals tax. You can see that, um, they are also running behind. Um, the reason for that is we have been aggressively budgeting, um, those items, because they too have grown between six and eight percent a year. So we are going to be monitoring that. We do note that it's four percent. Both of them are about four percent over this time the previous year. But the rate of growth is what is slowing down. So we're not going to grow at seven or eight percent. We'll probably be closer to four or five. All right, B-Pole, the bills won't go out. Well, the B, the B-Pole bills will go out this month. So, uh, right around the time the manager presents his budget, I'll know what B-Pole's going to look like. And we'll make those adjustments if necessary, um, during the budget process. Right now, we're pretty comfortable with, um, that forecast.
Okay. Mr. Duncan is Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. You have other thoughts, questions?
Uh, well, I guess just one of their kind of high altitudes. So the last time we really talked about, um, you know, a performance report, you were going to translate it into, as it says here, implications for the FY sixteen budget. Uh, do you have anything to observe about the implications of this information for the FY sixteen budget?
Well, what we have given to you in terms of our forecast previously, um, we're pretty much holding to. Um, we are making an assumption that the revenue growth, again, is going to be somewhere around, um, three to four percent. Um, it is not going to be the six and seven percent that it was in the past. And we are monitoring those individual items that, um, we believe, um, have the potential to, um, be under budget.
When's the next time we're going to get information? In other words, like, you know, in a month, we're going to get new sales tax numbers or whatever. What's kind of the, the coming months? What's the flow of information we're going to be getting?
Well, I can start doing it monthly, um, starting with the, um, January numbers.
I think that'd be.
We just closed, and I monitored them monthly anyway, but.
Why don't we do that then, if you're going to already monitor them?
We will, we will give them, um, to you monthly. I need about, um, three. I need about three weeks after the end of the month, because we won't have all the bank statements in, and they have to be reconciled so that we get the revenue numbers.
Okay. I think that'd be good, though, for us to get updates in that level, I mean, degree. Mr. Duncan?
Yes. So the last time we had a conversation, you were somewhere between flat and two percent for, uh, budget growth for FY sixteen. Is there anything in here that changes your calculus?
Um, we are waiting for our final assessment numbers that will have an impact. Um, again, now that we have six-month numbers for those key indicators, we'll look at that. If there's any possible way to make upward adjustments, we will do that. But right now, um, again, I'm around three.
Mr. Z, question?
The, uh, the real estate, um, Germans are reporting double-digit increases in assessed values, uh, sales va- based on sales for Falls Church City, for last year. Um, when will you have the, uh, real property assessments in hand?
Sometime around the middle of the month, a little later. That's when the notices will be sent out. So the figures will be final. Um, right now, um, we are looking at somewhere between four and five percent, um, assessed value growth.
All right, well, I just.
Overall, right?
That's overall.
Residentially.
All right. I mean, you know, residential home sales, even though they, they make up eighty percent of our assessed value, um, you, you can take a handful of sales and say that those, uh, values were ten percent, but that doesn't account for the whole market.
Well, that's certainly true. And the other thing said is also true, which is that, uh, real, the, the housing stock is, uh, by, by far the largest contributor. So, um, uh, you can, you can look forward to additional questions that, uh, go on that lines of inquiry with regard to, um, how we're doing with, uh, with assessments, not just, uh, logging the market, using that as an indicator, but how are we actually managing the assessment process?
That'll be fun.
That'll be a lot of fun.
Oliver?
Mr. LaCondre, if we're going to be looking at monthly data, would it be possible to get, um, cumulative figures sho- shown month by month so that we can see trends and compare them to prior years? A graph. I want a graph.
I thought that's what you wanted. Yes, ma'am. We can, we can supply you a graph.
What was that other awesome idea for a chart to add the other night?
This is, this is all part of the base, talking about a presentation baseline that we started last year. And, uh, you know, after asking months on end, I just gave up because I figured we'd never get it. So I'm glad you're asking.
But you've been getting graphs.
Well, you know, I would expect, uh, uh, trends based on a ba- trends with a baseline and, and explanation of, of why they trend as opposed to these little slat- snapshots. And depending on if I can memory is, is, uh, you know, a better process to, to go through this, so. Uh, which is why I asked about the assessment. So, you know, I, I would have expected you to lead off this discussion tonight with the twenty-two million dollars, which is by far the largest piece. But you, you know, you lead straight down this rabbit hole of little B-Pole, meals tax, these things have incremental value when you, when you, uh, count them all up. So I just can't tell you how disappointed I am that this whole process seems to be not to my satisfaction, understanding what it is you're trying to tell us. You gotta do better, man. The city has got to come to us with a standard package of, of budget material that we can then say, okay, this is what we want to look at. This year, last year, I thought we'd be in a different place this year, but we clearly are not.
Well, I think the, uh, real estate assessments aren't going to be available, it sounds like, for another. for another couple of weeks. So that information, I guess, is not, you're not able to really speak to that right now. Is that right?
That's correct. I gave you the range of the assessed value growth. Now, I'm not sure what other information that you would like.
You know, I'll jump in because I, you know, we've talked about this, but this is, this is just a quarterly financial report. That is just a snapshot. And so it is not intended to be a comprehensive financial review. We do that in the fall with the year-end financial report, and we did have a very comprehensive presentation at that point with trends and everything we can learn about the city's fiscal condition. And that, we do that on an annual basis. And it has not been our intent to try to do that on a quarterly basis. Quarterly, the quarterly report is a snapshot. And so what it tells you in a nutshell is we do on these economic indicators, that's why we focus on them, is what's happening with sales, meals. That's an indicator of economic activity in the city. And that's really what you get out of a quarterly report.
Well, the extent we're able to get it maybe in a format that people can digest better, maybe that's something we can try to put together. Once we do the last word, Dave's got to be in Richmond in five thirty. So we're trying to get him out of here.
Yeah, just two quick questions. So the upshot of all this is basically, we're looking on the, at least on the revenue side, about six point six percent. Is that the number? And I'm looking at subtotal revenue?
For this quarter, yes. For the, for the first six months of this fiscal year.
So basically flat?
Yes.
Okay. And then there was a line that I asked about during the Budget and Finance Meeting, and that was the use of fund balance. We're still showing twenty-five mil?
Yes. I'll explain that to you. As we do the budget, we are projecting what we believe our revenue will be each month. Because of the timing of those revenue receipts, you are using fund balance when your expenses exceed your revenue. And that's what this number is.
So it's just going to.
It'll never exceed what you appropriated in the budget. But during the year, because we don't receive everything.
At the same, right.
At the same, at the same level each month, you're going to have deficits.
Got it. So it's showing up as a deficit, but you're going to get your, say, real estate taxes coming in, which we'll cover. And I guess that's normal in municipal finance.
So the main charge is paying the school transfer amount early in the year, and so it shows.
Right.
Okay. Is there any other comments or have we gotten the last word on this issue? Thank you very much for coming on, sticking around tonight. I think we're winding up now. Mr. Snyder's got to be at a meeting.
Winding up or winding down?
Hopefully winding down. But are there any council comments or issues that we should discuss briefly? All right, seen none. Seen one, Mr. Duncan? No? Okay.
Just trying, my nose was on him, sorry.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
A clean.
A second?
To adjourn, second.
Oh, bye-bye.
Whatever.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Good evening.